All set.
Oh, and could you actually just unmute yourself and speak so that we can just hear your coming through? Okay?
You ca- am I not unmuted?
Oh, hold on. Sorry Christina, once again, if you mind.
Can you, can you hear me?
There you go. Yep, we got you. Thank you. Cool, cool. All right. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make ourselves invisible. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. No worries.
Hi Joe.
How are you?
I am okay. Hi Julia. Everybody is fashionably not early. It's Carrie. Steve, is that you that just connected?
Yes, I will be transferred to another device in a little bit, but for the beginning I'll be on a phone.
Okay. So we're just waiting for Curtis. There it is. All right, hi Curtis.
Hi.
Okay, since we're all.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Since we're all here and we have a lengthy agenda, let's get started. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Thursday, March 11th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law MGLC 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. The meeting will be broadcast unwilling at TV channel 1302 in Williamstown. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. I would like to propose to the committee if you are amenable to switching the agenda items a little bit and having the public comment that is unrelated to the budget hearing come first because we do have quite a few of those and then do the presentation and any public comment related to the specifically related to that budget presentation afterwards. Would everyone be amenable to that?
Sure.
Yes. Christina, I'm not sure I understand the.
We have, we have several, we have I think five or six people signed up for public comment on items not related to the budget hearing. And because we did this meeting, usually this, the, the public comment really related to the budget is usually a more flowing thing, but we have these very specific public comments that are not related to the hearing. I thought we could read those, then have the, the budget presentation and then have any public comment that was specific to that presentation afterwards.
It seems a little backwards to me only because the public comment on the budget presentation could help to inform some of the remarks that are made during the budget presentation, whereas the public comment, the rest of the public comment is really on the rest of the meeting, which follows the budget presentation. Right? I mean, we could say the budget presentation is 45 minutes and anybody who wants to make comment on things other than the budget presentation could come back at that time.
Right.
Not be distributed away, it just seems backwards.
My concern is that we have these lengthy public comments that are not related to the budget and we, because we received those first, we have to go through those first. So I thought we could do them prior to the presentation and then take any public comment specific to the budget after the actual presentation.
I see what you're saying. Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. And I will read the first, there are several that the committee will read and then some people have actually signed up to speak. So this first one is to be read. Good, and I'll read the first one. Good evening to all in the Greylock District. I'll keep this short and brief. The Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, BSE, voted that remote or hybrid school time will soon no longer count towards required contractual school hours. This supports what the majority of the parents led by the physician community has been stating for over six months now. I write you to simply state that the entire Mount Greylock District should be back in school full-time before the end of 2021 school year. This is to set the stage for a return to a full in-person year in 2122. The physician community have submitted overwhelming consensus that this is the best scenario for the health of our children. I trust this committee will continue to hold what is best for our children as your guiding principle for the path back to in-person learning for all grades in the Greylock School District. For further documentation, I would encourage all to review the PowerPoint presentation given at the 3/5 Bessie meeting. It includes a letter signed by over 300 doctors and their expert testimony about what is safe for our kids, our teachers, and our schools. I include a copy of the page below. Thank you, Brian and Kendra Drake of Williamstown, Mass. Would somebody like to read the next public comment, which is a read aloud?
I can do that.
Thank you Carrie.
So this is from John and Wendy Scavlam and it is a proposal for our senior class. That's the subject. Dear School Committee Members Superintendent McCandless and Principal Schutz, this letter is for public comment and concerns Agenda Item 8B, Time on Learning Regulation Changes Update. We strongly request and support recommendations for a return to in-person teaching for our students in the district as soon as possible with a special request to prioritize the senior class of 2021. Like many families in the district, we have been quote unquote hanging in there with some days better than others, but no days that are great. An okay day is a big victory when it occurs. But as the calendar marks one year since our students were sent home, we are past hanging in there, especially as things have significantly improved with respect to testing and vaccinations. It is time to bring our students back to school in person every day. Recent CDC guidance, disease experts guidance, state guidance, and a year's worth of knowledge about the disease confirm that the risk for children being out of school are far greater. In fact, we have heard this for months now from our own local pediatricians here on the ground reporting record cases reflecting a mental health crisis in our own community along with significant detriment to physical health in terms of weight gain especially. All representing harmful lifelong consequences, let alone the loss of learning in school. Mindful of where we are in the school year, we are specifically requesting that seniors who have roughly only 10 weeks of school left be prioritized for the return to in-person at Mount Greylock School. Students are defined as a class and many of this class of 2021 have been in school together as a class since kindergarten or even prior. Being a class means being together and sharing experiences in learning of all types in the classroom, on the playing field, on the stage, in the parking lot, at the lunch table, and in the halls together. The pandemic is robbing this class of many things, but perhaps most of all their identity. Anything that can be done to preserve even some amount of class unity and togetherness before they graduate is imperative to how they remember their class and their friends and how they identify with Mount Greylock, their high school, for the remainder of their lives. From a practical standpoint, this is a small class of only 84 students, meaning that providing them in full in-person represents only an additional 42 students per day if all elect to return and some may well elect to stay remote, meaning it could even be less than 40 additional students. Additionally, as the senior class, they are motivated to make this work and can be given the responsibility as their senior status suggests to lead the Mount Greylock student body and set the example of appropriate safe behavior for all. You could treat them like the young adults they are and grant them respect and appreciation. We owe it to them and to send the message that their school and their community cares about them and wants to afford them some semblance of time together as the class of 2021. Last spring, there was an enormous outpouring of support for the class of 2020 here and everywhere. That was truly incredible. To date, the class of 2021 seems to have largely been forgotten even though their entire year has been compromised without a single normal day. The simple fact is that none of our kids get this time back. It is truly lost and as such is most pronounced for the senior class for whom school ends for good come June. The transition from high school to college or a job, the real world, is hard enough without a mixture of deep emotions, both happy and sad. You're leaving the nest one way or another in most cases. Many will honestly probably be more than ready for this after spending the past year confined at home with their parents. But all will probably wish they could have spent more time with their extended family of friends, teachers, coaches, and other mentors in person at school and they will all be the better for it. It is not too late to afford them some of this invaluable formative time and celebrate the class of 2021. Thank you for your support and consideration of making this a priority. John and Wendy Scavlam, parents.
Thank you for reading that comment Carrie. The next comment is coming from Kim Nichol and she will be reading it herself.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I never know with Zoom if the technology is going to work or not. Okay, my name is Kim Nichol and I'm here to read a letter written and signed by a group of parents and caregivers from the Mount Greylock Regional School District. Dear Dr. McCandless and members of the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee, we are a group of concerned parents and caregivers who have come together to form an inclusion, diversity, belonging, and equity action network. The two recent incidents of racial bias that occurred at Mount Greylock underscore the intense need for parents and educators to join together to combat systemic racism and oppression. To be clear, these two incidents are incredibly concerning, but they are not the extent of negative experiences students of color have endured in our communities. Despite Mount Greylock's troubling history and handling racist incidents, our group remains hopeful that under your new leadership, we can work together as a community to create a safe, inclusive, and anti-racist environment that prioritizes belonging and productive learning in all of our schools. Your recent responses to incidents have included forthright, transparent, and timely communication. For that, we thank you. You have promised a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in our district. We believe that any potentially successful plan to combat racism has to draw on resources and input from the community. We therefore, we are therefore writing to ask you about your district-wide inclusion, diversity, belonging, and equity plans, goals, and strategies, and how you plan to engage families, students, and the community in developing these plans. More specifically, we ask that you model the goals of inclusion and transparency by integrating the community into the process of determining plans rather than simply reporting about them. In that spirit, we offer two recommendations as you prepare the district's budget for the upcoming year. First, we urge you to dedicate ample funds to hiring an IDBE consultant or group to conduct the needs assessment and training for faculty, staff, and students. These would be immediate steps that could provide a foundation on which to build future initiatives. Second, we also urge you to hire at least one full-time staff member in the district who has extensive training in DEI and belonging work in the K-12 education sector. Our students and teachers need support that is embedded and continually happening in order to be able to confront and dismantle systemic oppression and racism. Moreover, these suggested hires would serve as resources for students to learn in productive ways about debates that unfold nationally. We understand that teachers cannot cover all of these issues on their own and specialized staff should play a pivotal, pivotal role in this endeavor. As the district works to reassess, this is a quote, "and refocus our multi-pronged approach to change mindsets and behavior around equity and confront systemic oppression and racism" as set forth by the school council in our school improvement plan, end quote, we ask that you include all of us in those efforts. You have promised to extend and foster relationships with community resources. We are here to be those resources and to connect you with others as we all seek to hone an efficient anti-racist strategy for our school district and beyond. We understand that there is great urgency to begin this work. Please bring the community along as you, and partner as you begin. Yours in partnership, Shayna Adams Elgebly, Annie Art, Kareema Barrow, Daniel Bergstreser, Peter Chang, Sharon Claffey, Rahim Elgebly, Erin Kaiser-Clark, Emery Talash, Carrie Lyda Nichol, me, Molly Polk, Nicole Porter, Nina Pretto, Corinne Quirtdejong, Neil Roberts, Adrian St. John, and Melissa Zurov. We hope that you will hear this letter as an invitation to conversation both with families on this list and with others in the Mount Greylock Regional School District who would like to partner to make our schools as safe and inclusive as possible for all of our young people. And while this is coming before the budget conversation, we do think it is related to the budget conversation, which is why we wanted to make it here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Our next public comment is from Janine Leydlaw and I see that she's on Zoom. I don't know if she intended for us to read it or, okay. Would somebody on the committee like to read this letter? Curtis? Oh Julie, who's offering?
Sorry, Janine is saying she wants to read it.
Oh, she is. Okay, I can't hear her.
You're still muted, Janine.
Okay. Unmuted now?
All set.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Since the year 1983, I have been a teacher, although I'm not currently teaching. Although I would, I would happily go back to an in-person classroom even though I have hit age 60 and I actually have a comorbidity, but I'd still be happy to go back to an in-person classroom. At Mount Greylock, I worked as a substitute teacher in literally every classroom in the school. I served as a regular classroom teacher in, in math. Hi Julia. Julia started her career in my math classroom. French, Latin, English, and what we called exploratory middle school classes in both logic and theater. My three children are proud graduates of Mount Greylock. So this endless limbo of remote screen-based learning breaks my heart and it breaks my heart for nearly endless reasons. I will try to describe the two reasons that most constantly gnaw at me. First, my own classroom experience informs my opinion and I tried to maintain a lively classroom. So for instance, in Latin classes, I used to hand out these two-by-three cards and the students had to fill them out with quick correct Latin translations and then they came up in a sort of fun, slightly chaotic lines so that I could immediately stamp them with the coveted star punch. And if, if that wasn't correct, I would, I would very quietly send the students back for redos. That was instant feedback, quick corrections, and no embarrassing public raising of hands. It was no public airing of students' incorrect answers and no one was left out. It wasn't just the smart kids answering things. That was just a quick star punch or a circle of the error while the other students were milling around focusing excitedly on their own two-by-three cards. Can't do that in Zoom. In class, we made these, these verb wheels, which are, they're too fussy to explain to you and they're also too fussy to do by Zoom, but they are extremely helpful in mastering those challenging Latin or French verb forms. Kids were always up and down at the whiteboard. They were doing challenges that they thought were games. We threw a set of foam rubber dice to see who would go to the board next. Because these kids went up the board, random, haha, random dice or no, I could always see which kid was coming to the board and I could thus select each specific challenge, well depending, but maybe could spec- select specific challenges and calibrate the difficulty of the challenge to what I judged to be the difficulty of the random child who was at the board and I could set that child up for success in front of his or her peers. In one year's class, we made, we made maths with a substance, Mylex PK67 that existed only in our imaginations. In English classes, we threw Beanie Babies from kid to kid during discussion groups. Students thrive on immediate and physical interaction. It helps with student bonding and I could go on and on. My second dismay is that I think of the kids who are not part of the financial and educational elite of our community as well as those who are but whose family situations may be difficult in ways that we don't understand. It's always been true, especially here in Berkshire County, that there are kids you can just shove into a dark closet with a flashlight, a calculus text, copy of Strunk and White and Riverside Shakespeare, and they will emerge four years later as Rhodes Scholars. Our best and brightest will be fine no matter what. Well, hurrah and God bless them. But not all children learn effortlessly. Not all come from homes where the family has the time and resources to support those students as they learn remotely from a screen. Those kids are falling behind. They are losing months and years, now years of quality education. And my heart breaks.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Next up on public comment, this is coming from Kathy Keating.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm commenting on Agenda Item 8B. Dear School Committee Members, I'm writing again to voice my support for a return to a more robust in-person learning educational experience for our children. It has truly been a lost opportunity this entire year to not have had our kids in the building more. We have had consistently low community prevalence of COVID-19 and it's been demonstrated over and over that there is a low risk of transmission of COVID in a school setting with mitigating factors in place including masks, social distancing, and now testing. I agree that vaccinations would have been appropriate to give to teachers earlier on and was disappointed that they weren't, but that by no means should be yet another requirement to teach, for teachers to get back in the building with students full-time. Our children continue to suffer the negative mental, educational, and physical consequences of this district's educational policies this year. This is only bringing greater divisions between the children and families who have resources needed to try and do this at home and the ones who don't. This seems in stark opposition to the stated mission of the district read at the beginning of this meeting. Please make this right as soon as possible. Our kids deserve better than what this district has been giving them this year. When we moved here nine years ago, we did so in part because of the strong public education provided. I worry that the district is going to suffer in terms of academic performance, overall attendance, and reputation given what has happened here this year. Please correct the course you have set this year now to avoid more negative consequences for our district, but more importantly for our children. They're depending on you. Um, I'm looking forward to some discussion about this topic this evening amongst the budget discussion. Thank you sincerely, Catherine Keating. Oh, I can't hear you Christina.
Our next public comment is from Rebecca Green. Would somebody on the committee like to read this? Julia?
Read it.
Thank you.
Dear Ms. Conry, I'm submitting a public comment in reference to Agenda Item 8B, Time on Learning Regulation Changes Update. If you could please read this for me, I would appreciate it. My name is Rebecca Green. I'm the parent of a West 6th grader and a teacher at a local school. I would like the committee to know that I'm strongly in favor of a return to full in-person learning for our elementary and middle school students. Our schools have the ability to meet the guidelines for safe, full, in-person learning established by DESI. Studies have shown that for the majority of students, hybrid and remote models for school are not as effective for student learning. In addition, the loss of normalcy, the lack of access to school-based resources. In addition, the loss of normalcy, the lack of access to school-based resources, and the loss of socialization have contributed to an increase in mental health disorders in students or have exacerbated already-present mental health struggles. As long as schools can meet DESI's guidelines for in-person instruction, there are no science or public health-based arguments for keeping schools functioning in a hybrid or remote model at this point. There has been little evidence of in-school transmission of COVID in schools that have been open fully in person throughout the pandemic. I trust that the Mount Greylock School District has the ability to open and run our elementary and middle schools following the guidelines set forth by DESI. I know that my son will be as safe as he can be and have a significantly improved learning experience once Wes is open fully in person. I encourage the committee to support the transition to a fully in-person model on April 5th. Thank you, Rebecca Green.
Thank you for reading that, Julia. And the last sign-up we have here is from John Spellman. Would somebody from the committee like to read this last one? Curtis, thank you.
Good. Subject meeting today, John Spellman. I am the parent of two elementary school-aged children. One of them attends Wes. The other was removed from Wes out of concern there would be insufficient in-person instruction this year. I'm disappointed in the minimal amount of in-person instruction that occurred this year. There is no valid reason for why in-person schooling does not occur on Wednesday. I also feel that we should move past the hybrid model and should have children in elementary school attend full-time. Best, John Spellman.
Thank you, Curtis. So that concludes this portion of our public comment. So next up on our agenda is Mount Greylock Regional School District FY22 Budget Presentation. And I believe I'm turning this over to Joe.
Actually, I think tonight Jake is, Superintendent McCandless is going to take the lead here.
Great.
I will happily follow.
Yeah, Jake and Joe Show. And I will, this is the, the literature major portion of the program. The economics major portion of the program will come afterward when I hand over to Mr. Bergeron. So thank you all. Thank you all for attending this meeting electronically tonight, committee members, and, and folks that are friends and neighbors and who care about who we are and what we do here. This is, I think, fifteen or sixteen slides to sort of embed our budget in a, in a philosophical context and in a, and in a working context about who we are and how we approach the budget as a new leadership team here in the Mount Regional, Mount Greylock Regional School District. And then we will be handing over to, to Mr. Bergeron to, to walk through the particulars of the line items. So, you know, a good question to ask is, what is a, what is a school budget? What's the point? You know, as, as a public entity of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our school committee elected by residents of Lanesboro and Williamstown, this is one of the, the three or four really core legal responsibilities that a school committee has. I won't read all the, the legal stuff there on the right of this slide, but. So this is, this is one of the functions that a, a fairly elected school committee is obligated to undertake. And that's really the legal and kind of the bureaucratic answer. But, but a school budget also, you know, must reflect throughout its lines and in its totality. And this is an interesting way to, to think through when budget reductions are called for, as I have certainly been in, in position to, to need to think through in the past. A school budget has to reflect, what are we legally obligated to provide our students and our community and our staff? What are we morally and ethically obligated to provide? What do our staff, students, families, and the larger community need and want us to promote through the budget? So we have legal obligations, ethical obligations, then we get into the stuff that, that people want. And then there's everything else. And in my experience from, from, I think this is my sixteenth or seventeenth budget as a superintendent, almost everything that, that gets discussed in school budgets fall within those first three bullets. So that's what a budget has to reflect. Our budget work and our budget process has to reflect some additional pieces. And this is certainly not an exhaustive list. This is just, you know, some, some thoughts as we move forward this year. Our school budget work has to reflect that we are respectful and humble stewards of our community's resources. We have to keep in mind that our individual neighbors, individual households, individual businesses in the two communities that we serve, Lanesboro and Williamstown, essentially, they, they make all of this happen through paying their property tax bills. The, the rest of the Commonwealth's residents help out to some degree in a community like ours, not as great of a degree as, as in maybe some more urban districts that, that tend to have a greater proportion of their educational program paid for by the state because of differences in property values and, and abilities to pay. Our school budget work also has to reflect mindfulness that communities fund a host of services for their residents. Every superintendent probably wishes that school departments were the only thing that towns and communities and cities had to fund. But, but towns and cities have to fund a lot of things to meet a lot of needs. And, and so, you know, we see this relationship that we are building. We see a positive, close, communicative relationship with the finance teams, the finance committees, and the finance executives in our neighboring towns as being really vital, both in the short term and the long term, our well-being as a school district and our dependability as a school district for funding from year to year. And these relationships are really vital in fulfilling our vision. So a school budget is not a set of commandments that are intractable and written in stone. A school budget is, moving to the right of the screen, it's a document that has to be flexible because it reflects a vision and a pathway. So it's, it's not a, a map that we absolutely have to follow or can follow. I can tell you during budget preparations in, in Fiscal '21, I'm not sure any of us were thinking that we would be in the midst of a pandemic as we prepared Fiscal '22. So we have to be flexible. A budget is not simply a bureaucratic document that ticks the boxes for the state and our member towns. But a budget is actually, at its heart, a reflection of what we believe, what we value, who we value, and how we consider our role as educators. Last bullet, a school budget is not a document that we simply adjust from year to year, tweaking lightly to hit a new bottom line. But instead, a school budget is actually a document that requires deep annual thought, reflection, and processing that reflects who we are and, and where we are as a community of learners, as taxpayers, even reflecting what's going on in our larger society. And I borrowed a photograph of something that anybody that frequents Northshire Bookstore up in Manchester, Route 7. Nothing is written in stone, particularly a school budget. We do have a bottom line that is written in stone. But the way we expand that bottom line has to remain to some degree flexible so we can be responsive, reflective educators and practitioners. So what are we working to do with this Fiscal '22 budget in the Mount Greylock Regional School District? We are working to better represent where costs actually happen. What we mean by that is, you know, there are, there are expenditures that happen in individual school buildings. There are expenditures that happen in the district office, and there are expenditures that happen in the district office that have deep impacts on school buildings. And we're, we're working, I think it will be a multi-year process, but we're working to actually illustrate that with more clarity through our budget process. And we also want to bring just more clarity, more transparency, and more understand, and understandability to the written budget document itself. We want to rethink naming conventions, meaning what the individual lines that you're going to see later. Actually, we want to have the lines be as clearly indicative of, of what they do and what they're paying for as is possible within Department of Elementary and Secondary ed guidelines to allow for better clarity and better readability by the folks that actually pay the bills. We want to rethink budgeting processes to, to be really exclusively almost focused on academic, social, social and emotional, and cultural competency goals. You know, the bottom line is, is outcomes for our students. And, and we know that a budget works best and serves students best and actually serves the community best when there's really tight alignment between district improvement plans, individual school improvement plans that school councils are advocating and working toward, individual educator plans, including the superintendent's educator plan, and the budget. The, the more tightly that all of those items are coupled, the more the budget is going to reflect that it's doing what we actually want it to do for our students. And then generally, our final goal of what we're working to do with our budget is we just generally want to increase the rightness and the correctness of the budget in bureaucratic ways because we want it to be perfectly clear where our money is going and why. And, and in the future, when there's shifts in that, why? But we also want it to be just more readable, more correct in human ways because that serves the community best, serves our students best, and it's really the most fair to the people that actually serve in the school district, people that do the work every day in, in school buildings, to have an understandable budget that is right and that is correct. So what does our school budget say about us? I believe the budget plan we're putting before you tonight says a bunch of things. And, and again, this is not an exhaustive list, but I think this budget says that we value the people who work directly with our students, the people that actually come in and make school happen. We value recovery from a difficult year for our students, for our families, and a difficult year for our staff. This budget says that we understand that we serve students best when we infuse and saturate budget and soak the budget with opportunities to become more culturally competent and build a better sense of belonging for all students and families and make sure that all students are represented in our curriculum and in our materials, whether they're curricular or in the library, and in our approach to teaching and learning. We value and keep classrooms at the center of our efforts. I think this budget says that, and you will see that unfold. We understand that students will return to school in the fall, in, in the spring, ideally, physically, with needs that differ from any other time in our history. And so social and emotional learning needs to be infused throughout our budget. Again, same way the cultural competency and cultural proficiency really have to infiltrate every bit of our practice from the central office through to individual classrooms, playgrounds, gymnasiums, music rooms, auditoriums. So too does social and emotional learning and support for students' wellness. And then finally, this budget says that we value greater clarity in the way that we budget, and we value real clarity as to where our town's money actually is going and why. So this, this gets into sort of the new things that we're asking for within, within this Fiscal '22 budget. New investments, a focus on recovery and growth. Of course, one of our aims is to honor wherever possible, school council requests. Members of the school council offer their, their intellect, their energy, their experience, their reflectiveness in so many ways. And, and we think philosophically it's important to honor those requests, and you'll see that tonight. We know that our investments need to address short-term needs, but they also need to, to express, you know, a wise planning process and a long-term investment in our students over time as they progress pre-K through grade twelve and beyond in the Mount Greylock Regional School District. This budget reflects that we have to maintain the things that matter. And you will see that evident in this budget. And this budget has to reflect that we are responding to school, community, and larger community wants and larger community needs. And we hope that you'll see all of that. There's some things that you're not going to see probably as fully realized as you would like to. And we're still waiting on some information. And, and when we gather again on March 25th, we hope you will see a fuller realization of some things that you, that you may have a nagging sense of, of incompleteness about this evening. New investments as we focus on recovery and growth. This is really, I think, probably the slide that, that, that some of you have been waiting for. You know, what are we going to do that's new? What are we going to do that's different? As we try to get through the school year we're doing and, and use the, the little energy we have left after that on, on planning for the year ahead. So what you will see tonight is a request for a school social worker at Lanesboro Elementary. You will see requests for a full-day pre-kindergarten teacher and paraprofessional at Lanesboro Elementary. You will see the same request, a full-day pre-K teacher and paraprofessional at Williamstown Elementary School. You'll see a request for a school social worker, which is actually a teaching social worker at Mount Greylock Regional School. You'll see embedded within the budget tonight, within the lines, a full-time Student Resource Center teacher at Mount Greylock. You will see requests for ELA curriculum work at Lanesboro and Williamstown Elementary Schools. You, you may not see it as evidently, although on the 25th, we are very hopeful you will. Investment in diversity, equity, inclusion, and, and, sorry, I meant to have belonging where that second equity is. Work and planning, you know, our, our real vision for this work, and, and certainly mindful of the, the excellent letter that was shared by Ms. Nichol and, and the many families who undersigned that letter. We, we know that we need to have some very visible, real, tangible things going on. And, and between tonight and the 25th, you will, you will see that. Tonight, you'll see sort of a vision for where we want to go with that. But we also know that that, that the, the real power is that we have a culturally competent, culturally proficient staff from pre-K through grade twelve and at the central office in that that is infusing into everything we do. And it's evident in the things we say and the things we don't say. It's evident in the way we practice and in the ways we opt not to practice. It's evident in our investments that we make in curriculum and materials and programming, and it's evident in what we take a pass on in curriculum and materials and programming. It's evident in the way we hire people. It's evident in the way we word job descriptions so that they are inviting rather than excluding. And, and we hope you see that tonight. And, and if you're not feeling like you're seeing it, please hang on until February 25th. And then finally, an investment, same thing. It's showing up in a lot of different lines all over the place because DESI doesn't really give us a particularly neat place to, to stack this. Summer programming for, for special needs students and above and beyond for special needs students and for probably more regular ed students than, than we have offered in years and years. I'm guessing if Mount Greylock is like most other school districts. So I'm gonna take three or four slides to work through this piece because this is, this is heavy duty. And it, and it may be on a, on a human scale, the most important work that we are undertaking in this district. It may be the most important work, let me rephrase that, that we are continuing in this district because there are many people who have been carrying this mission with them close to their, their, their heads and their hearts and their hands. This mission with them close to their, their, their heads and their hearts and their hands. For years, and we really want to honor that, encourage that, empower that, and bring the larger community into the conversation. Around diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. We understand that we have to emphasize the importance of listening. We understand that we have to help our school community develop the tools for engaging and productive listening. And productive conversations. We understand that we have to facilitate those conversations across school life. But also real life and bigger life and larger community and region and world life. We know that we have to encourage the good that comes from a more actively communicative and supportive school community. And the larger communities we serve. And we understand we have to engage, we must engage with voices and build relationships with people outside of our school communities. And even outside of our local community. To expand our own experiences, our own awareness and our knowledge and our understanding. So that we can best serve the students that we have the honor and privilege of serving. Summer of 21 and 22. This is where we're really laying out our, our vision for where this work goes. We want to plan and identify situations where we can listen and collect perspectives from the people that we serve. Make investments in PD for our staff. That acknowledges their fears and challenges in participating in and leading conversations around differences. I think sometimes the, the heart is very willing and the head is very willing. There is a fear that comes from stepping into facilitating conversations. And answering difficult questions, there is a concern about saying the wrong thing. And we need to support our educators and support our students as well. In helping them gain the tools. To be able to have these conversations in, in safe, powerful and meaningful ways. PD funding, a lot of our PD funding is going to go directly to these. Both grant funding and regular budget funded. We think it's vital that we conduct some equity audits that include a look at academic outcomes, social and emotional outcomes. Curricular and co-curricular participation and outcomes. To identify areas where bias, a lack of a fair opportunity and equal opportunity. Or other barriers to full participation and engagement. In school life for some students exist, we know that this is there. We, we need to, and we owe the community. To quantify that so that we can have conversations in the community and within the school community. To, to actually do something about it. We know that we have to engage in a reevaluate, in a reevaluation of curriculum and learning materials. For ways that may fail students. And may fail our community and ultimately fail everybody involved. Investments, again, in professional development, new curriculum materials. In the hiring of new staff, including new social workers for two of our three schools. Will all be focused on the core of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And you'll see a little bit more about hiring processes in, in. The next slide or the slide after this. Continuing, we want to continue, we intend to continue and reach out and build stronger relationships with neighboring institutions and organizations. That allow our students, our faculty and our staff, the opportunities to participate in talks, lectures. Programs and other learning opportunities. And I can say from being here just for a few months, the number of opportunities that have been passed along. By our neighbors at Williams College that we've shared with students, that we've shared with staff, that we've engaged in ourself. It's, it's, there, there's such a strong current of that existing, and we want to build that. And, and increase the partners that we're engaging in that work with. So we're very grateful for what we have and look forward to building more. We need to undertake a detailed review of hiring practices, including our job postings, how they're worded. What are they saying in words and what are they saying in, in subtext? That may or may not. Alert a potential candidates that we are a place that values all people and thinks that all people. Are, are, are worthy of working here. We want to review our recruiting and advertising practices. Sorry, my lights just went out, so I'm gonna move a little bit. Apologies. No, I don't know how you just do your magical arm wave and snap and it comes back on, I do not have that yet. Apologies to everybody watching for that. We, we do want to look at our job postings, how we recruit, where we recruit, how we advertise, where we advertise. And, and we, we see a need to consider expert recommendations. For best practices is how to best approach and invest in this work. So that we are appealing to, to the folks that we want and need to appeal to. And then we want to create safe and easy ways for members of our community to know where and when. We continue to operate in spite of our best intentions. In ways that show that explicit or implicit bias. And personal and or organizational blind spots exist, we know that they do, we know they will continue to. And only when we have a, a safe, easy mechanism. For, for people to let us know that, whether it's me as the superintendent or a practice in a school or, or something else. We, we will not get better. These blind spots will not take care of themselves. Unless we are paying attention to them and, and carefully reflecting and hearing. How, how, how our words and our actions and our practices and our policies are impacting the people that we're here to serve. And so we want to be able for folks, we want to be able to receive and process this information. In safe and respectful ways that leave the person who is, who is sharing this with us, who is, who is taking that step. With the knowledge that they're part of a positive process and part of an iterative process. That informs itself and, and helps all of us as individuals and as an organization grow. And be better servants to this community. We are currently working with or attempting to work with new consultants on a long-term strategic, on long-term strategic planning work. We have a Zoom meeting with, I think, a nationally recognized consultant on Monday. That we are looking forward to. We have worked with several community-based partners so far in the Greater Berkshire County region for helping us to consider and reflect on ourselves. Our practices and our planning for DEI and D. We include within the current budget. That, that this reflection in this work is embedded in, in several lines of the budget. Curriculum lines, PD lines, purchasing lines. A real area that I think all, all school libraries should be focusing on, and, and I, I'm sure that ours have, and we want to encourage. To continue that is to make sure that, that students and voices. All, the voices of all students in the way that, that students are. And, and community members are, are represented in our, in both our curriculum and our library materials. And we are committed to using in-district funding sources as well as developing new partnerships locally or, or. Caring for and caressing existing partnerships. That, that will support deep and continuous, long-term work and ensuring that all of our places, all of our spaces. And all of our opportunities, including the opportunity to come to school hassle-free. Is existent for all of our students and all of our families. And, and we certainly need to be welcoming, respectful, we need to be celebratory of who our students are. And who their families are, and, and we need to send the message, everything we shoot, we do should be saying. That, that we know we're, we're here solely, we, we exist, our work exists solely to serve. Each and every one of you as well as all of you. I look to the school committee for a recommendation on the hiring of, of a diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging full-time director. Or coordinator. My personal recommendation is that I, I am really excited about this. I'm one of few superintendents in Western Massachusetts that actually have a track record of. Creating funding and hiring for this position at our neighbors down the road in Pittsfield. So I am fully supportive of this position. For me, the timing of it and, and seeing it come to fruition as a result of a community informs strategic plan. So we are really getting exactly who and what our students and our faculty and our community needs of this position. That is, that is something I would, I would be able to advocate for. But, but I am certainly open to, to the excellent comments that came in tonight and that we've been receiving in an ongoing basis for. Really the whole time I've been here since November. And look forward to that conversation with the school committee. And on March 25th, we will bring forward a, a, a full funding plan as a part of the final budget presentation and adoption. That, that may include further sizable requests from the annual school budget. And/or school choice funds. As well as being reflective of partnerships we are trying to grow in this particular area. So getting back to our new investment focus after taking several slides on something that, that I see. As among our most important work on a human scale. We are investing in social and emotional learning support. We are honoring the requests of the school councils at both Lanesboro and Mount Graylock Regional School. For additional student mental and, and social wellness staff. We have, as you saw, maybe five or six slides ago. We have budgeting for school social workers in both of those schools. And at Mount Graylock, a student resource center facilitator. And then finally, this is, I occasionally, you know. I, I'm never quite sure how to prioritize things because in, in my world, everything and everyone is important. This is really, this is an important set of bullets here. We are advocating tonight in this budget plan. Full-day pre-kindergarten at Lanesboro Elementary School and Williamstown Elementary School. Or should I say, we're advocating for one section of full-day pre-kindergarten at each of those schools. Currently, the schools are served by, by half-day programs. We are advocating that we, in addition to those half-day programs. We add one full-day classroom at each of our two wonderful elementary schools. Our current census information indicates the potential for 52 pre-K students. In Williamstown. And 37 potential pre-K students looking for placement at Lanesboro Elementary. So I think the number of students that are out there and families that are out there looking for this. Suggest that this is a, a wise and appropriate move. To me. And I'm a high school teacher by trade with, with that literature degree that I mentioned earlier. One thing I have learned and has been a joy to learn as a superintendent over, over the 16 years I've been doing this. Is that, that, the, the absolute best investment that a school district can make in its communities and its children and its families. And in its own academic future. And, and own future academic outcomes. Is to invest heavily in pre-kindergarten for our youngest students. That's an investment, if we have a three-year-old, we get to see the return on that investment year after year after year. For more than a decade. And I think there are, you know, when, when you're talking about high-quality preschool. And at Lanesboro Elementary and Williamstown Elementary, we offer the high, highest quality preschool. We're very proud of those programs and the people that make those programs happen on a daily basis. This is just a great investment on every level. And the time is always right to do this. But we think the time is particularly right this year. As we know that even our youngest students and their families are going to be trying to rebound from this year that we're hopefully putting behind us soon. Our intent for these two new sections of pre-K, one at each elementary school. Is to offer these programs free of charge. It's something that, that the community and the school district are offering to the, to members of the community who are parents of young children. Our intent is to prioritize the, the students who come into these programs. We would prioritize for students with special needs. We would prioritize for students who are experiencing economic difficulty and challenges at home. We would prioritize for students who are, who are learning English and working to learn English, even as they and their families are adjusting to so much. That's new and different. You know, culturally, linguistically, in terms of work, perhaps even in terms of climate, in terms of available food. You know, we, we really want to prioritize the students that we would, that I think we would generally perceive. Need these services the most. And so we're, we're approaching the, the Jake, the, the Jake portion of this, the closing of it, which. May come as a tremendous relief to some of you. And so I will close before I hand over to, to Joe Bergeron, our, our school business official. With a quote from Rashid Ogunlaru. And it's a quote I really like from a book of his called, called Soul Trader, Putting the Heart Back Into Your Business. It's a business-y quote, he's, he's a writer about business and a life coach. But I really think this applies to how we perceive the budgeting process here at Mount Graylock. These days, see money, currency as the flow of energy and giving that cycles between you, others and me. Now let it flow kindly, fairly and mindfully. And if we can meet these aims in our school budget. Then I think we have met our legal obligations, we've met our moral obligations. We've met what people want us to do and expect us to do in these communities. And we know that we are putting a, a good product forward. For, for the families that call Williamstown home, that call Lanesboro home. And for the people that actually. Make all of this possible for us, the residents of those two towns. So I, I don't know if there are questions on, on this piece of the. Of the presentation, certainly happy to have questions, or we can allow Joe to walk through. The, the finer points and the details of, of the line item budget, and then we can have questions. However you, you would like to run that school committee.
I think it makes sense to let Joe do his presentations and hold the questions till after.
Okay, I will stop my screen share and, and hand over to Joe.
Although Dr. McCandless is always a challenging thing to do, and, and doing it with, with lots of numbers. Feels like an impossible task, so please bear with me as I attempt that. Christina, I do need screen sharing, please.
Okay, sorry, you don't already have that. Is that good?
I believe so, yes it is. I just need to figure out which of the many windows. I would like to share. All right, so. As Dr. McCandless indicated, we did. Upload our draft budget to the district's website roughly 48 hours ago. And all school committee members have this PDF within their packet as well. The watermark draft is especially appropriate here tonight because given all of the change that we are seeing as we attempt to plan for FY22. And all the work that we have before us, I think it's important to note that this is a work in progress. And that there will be changes over the course of the next couple of weeks, there will be additions. To the expenditures that we would like to plan, and there will most likely be updates to the ways that we hope to fund those expenditures. So all of that indicates that I, I think that this is our good first cut at it. But I'm going to highlight at a high level where we stand right now. And then also speak about where we think this budget is. And then also speak about where we think this budget is formed, its presentation will head over the course of the next two weeks. So taking it at a top level within this PDF, I'm going to give you a tour of, of how to read this regional school district's budget because our, our regional school district is a, is a special entity in and of itself amongst even regional school districts here in Massachusetts. And so I think it's important to give people a lay of the land of how to read what we have here in front of us. So the PDF itself is currently a 13-page document. The first page is, is, is perhaps the most important if you only want to spend a few minutes looking at a, at a budget and try to understand what it, what it means for, for the member towns and, and for where we are headed financially. Here you have two primary sections, FY21, the year that we are currently in, and FY22, which is the, the school year contained by the calendar years 2021 and 2022. As we look at the top line of this cover sheet, the gross operating budget represents for each of our buildings as well as for the district as a whole, where we and how much we are planning on spending for the operations of the schools. If you slide down about three quarters of the way down the page, you will see the gross capital budget, which is, in our district's case, is the amount that we require in order to operate within the debt payment schedule that we have for the new Mount Greylock Regional School. Our two elementary schools are, they were built when the elementary schools were a part of the, the town school districts and any remaining payments on those buildings come straight from the town's budget and the town's debt, own debt schedule as opposed to coming from the regional school districts budget. So if you only want to look at a few super top-level numbers, you would be looking at these FY22 gross operating budgets as well as the FY22 gross capital budget for Mount Greylock Regional School. Right off the bat, one thing to note is that we are representing the long-term capital budget for Mount Greylock Regional School here as I'm circling it with my cursor here in FY22, whereas last year that represented both long-term and short-term payments related to the school. The short-term, the bond anticipation notes have per auditor moved up to the Mount Greylock Regional School operating budget. So right off the bat, there's actually $180,000 that's really just transferred between two cost centers within the overall budget. So it's important to note that that is not, it's not that we're paying a whole lot less for the building in this year. It's actually that we've transferred those costs in the way we represent them to a different part of the budget. That's part one. Part two is, as you then look at how we plan to fund the gross operating budgets, you'll see that we have a variety of sources of revenue that are applied against that gross operating budget before you eventually get down to the net operating assessments to our member towns. The net operating assessments represent the amounts that we require our local tax base and our local towns to fund, hopefully through, through assessment and votes at our two member towns town meetings. So if we start from the top here, if we just start to look at the differences between FY21 and FY22 that we are proposing, we are proposing an expanded use of our tuition revolver and our school choice revolver, which are both sources of income for the district as a whole. They are funds that we are allowed legally to carry from one year into the next and to use in a situation, especially where we're attempting to expand our programming, expand our opportunities and gradually place that overall cost to our towns or hope that the state or federal government will pick up costs. So you'll see an expanded use of tuition and choice here in this year. You'll also see a significantly expanded use of grant funding. Currently, we have the SRT2 federal grant funding that is administered by the state of Massachusetts planned for FY22. That is COVID relief-oriented funds that we are able to utilize for a variety of purposes in bolstering, bolstering our academic programming as well as more nuts and bolts-related activity to prepare for FY22. Something that's important to note with respect to grant funding is that we do keep hearing from the state that additional federal funding is on its way, that K through 12 education is a priority for the federal government and that additional relief will be on its way. We do not know what form that will take or, or what volume that will come in, but it is something that we continue to hear from both state and federal legislators. As we continue down through this, once we pass through the net operating budget numbers, we get into state aid, A, B, and C, Chapter 78, Chapter 71, transportation aid, and charter tuition reimbursement. Those are three forms of state aid that we will touch on towards the end of the, of the budget document here in that we, as a regional school district, do apportion that state aid to our three school buildings based on a formula that is embedded within our regional agreement. So how, how those funds are apportioned out across our, our schools, that's embedded within the regional agreement. And then the last line here, transfer from excess and deficiency. Excess and deficiency is the revolver that we are able to, to operate within the regional school district that results from funds that we're able to save from certain sources of revenue from one year to the next. And, and the goal there is to, similar to tuition and choice, have a fund that can travel from one year to the next that is able to help us begin to fund costs or fund one-time costs as we, as we navigate from year to year. So once you travel through all of this, you get down to the net operating assessments to member towns. The net operating assessments to member towns represent the funds that we are asking our towns to directly pay for through money that is appropriated at the annual town meetings of the two towns. How we determine what portion is being requested of Lanesboro and what portion is being requested of Williamstown is again, a subject of the regional agreement. And I will walk through how that is handled here in a few minutes. So we travel down through the operating assessments. We, we get to final numbers in terms of operating assessments for our two member towns and then we need to apportion the, the gross capital budget. Again, how those costs are shared by our two member towns dictated by language within the regional agreement. Once you travel through all of that, you get to what most, most people within each town pay attention to each year, which is how is the assessment changing from one year to the next? And as we look at what we currently have in draft form, and I'm going to keep on saying draft, draft, draft all night long, because I think it's important to note that this is still a work in progress here right now. Currently, we are exhibiting a 1.13% increase for the town of Lanesboro over its assessment for FY21 and a 1.67% increase for the town of Williamstown in its assessment for FY22. I just traveled through a lot of numbers and a lot of technical language pretty quickly. If people have questions right now at this level, I can certainly answer them. Otherwise, I'm going to scroll down to the base of the document and walk you through how we do the apportionment of the various revenue sources as well as the, the assessments to our member towns.
Looks like Jose asked a question. We don't have to be formal about this part. Anyone can ask questions without me butting in.
Sorry Christina, I'll, I'll, I'll butt in. So Joe, just wanted to, just to clarify and, you know, I can maybe do this on my own, but you probably know the answer. But I was just curious about the 1.67 increase in terms of what we're asking from the town of Williamstown. Is that because of our increased ask for, for operations at Wes? Or in terms of the bulk of that, that increase? I'm curious about why that number looks so different from, from the Lanesboro number.
Why the percentage increase would be different between the two, the two towns? That, well, the, the underlying math there is that, one, yes, the, the operating increase request is more significant at Williamstown Elementary School right now in absolute numbers as well as as a percentage than it is at Lanesboro Elementary School. The other side of it is that the, the way costs are shared across the two towns, generally, any, any shift that we see overall will, will end up being a portion more to the town of Williamstown as a result of the, the math behind calculations around its ability to pay, which is a part of the state's calculations. It's also a part of, of how we utilize the numbers that we have at our disposal internally around the equalized valuations of the two towns and the student enrollment that is, that is provided by each of the two towns. But, but the, the vast majority here is, is currently the accounting for how Williamstown Elementary School's spending is expanding.
Thank you.
Joe, I think this is just a typo, but in the furthest right column, should that be FY21 to 22?
Yes, it should be. Draft, 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 but yes, FY21, FY22.
Joe, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if now is the right time, so feel free to tell me later is a better time. As I, I don't have a sense of whether we're drawing on a similar amount from tuition choice and E and D as a typical year. And what I'm thinking about is the important presentation that Dr. McCandless shared and the investment in all these positions, which I concur with. But wondering how sustainable that is over time and what, what is left in our, you know, accounts that I think helped fill the gap when, when there's, when there's a need.
And a, a quick answer to that is that I think over the course of the next couple of weeks, we will internally develop a more sophisticated presentation around current fund balances where those can head between right now, the end of this year, the end of next year, and what we might be suggesting as far as a multi-year expansion of the requests from our two towns to try to ease the, the one-year impact. But, but know internally and know in terms of what we project, what that means for the towns and their finances. So that's something that is, that is underway. Right now, we're trying to make sure that we stop a lot of the ground from moving underneath first so that we can then, then put numbers out that we can, we can stand behind with, with confidence.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this level right now?
Yeah, I, I just have one last one and it's, it's, uh, this one I think can, can be answered by either you, Joe, or Jake. I believe it was two weeks ago when we, we heard from the then-principal of Wes about the identified need or the need identified by both the school council and the school administrators for an additional sixth-grade teacher because of, I guess, a variety of, of issues, needs at the school. But I, I, I didn't see that in either Jake's presentation and it's, and it sounds like that's not included in this budget. Now, I wanted to, to, to see if you, either of you had a, had a comment or about that, what, why that doesn't appear in this, in this request.
Yeah, I'm happy to weigh in on that, Jose, and I'll, I'll start, I'll try to be brief, but sort of, you know, philosophically, the, 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 the school committee builds the budget, you know, the, the school councils do send their recommendations and they are that, their recommendations. I, I think in, in, in most cases, a superintendent, a finance director, a school committee really honor the work of the school committee or the school council. And we certainly do indeed honor the work of the school council at all three of our schools. When we went back and went through the number of students that we currently have, the number of students we anticipating being back from remote, from homeschool, allowing for some degree of, of new students moving in, we really could not justify the need for that. I, I think working with the data they were working at at the time, it was a sound recommendation. But as we continued to thresh through that data, it, it just, you know, and included the, the, the notion that we do have teachers returning in the fall from the remote academy back into the physical building, that, that request was, was what was not one that we would recommend enacting at this point. It's certainly if, if we are taken aback by, by any class-sized data as we approach the fall, we will, you know, look to our flexible plan and figure out how to address that because that's what good practitioners do from, from the central office. But, but right now, we just, the data just did not really support that that was, that was the best use of, of our, our resources right now.
And just to follow up quickly, Jake, and then I just wanted to confirm that this is, this is what you, what you just, what I think what you implied is that the remote academy, as it's, provides a service for, for families during the pandemic, will, will not exist during the next fiscal or academic year.
What, if, if we are ordered to do so by the Commonwealth, it will exist. But, but you're reading between the lines on my statement. And, and there's also, I'll, I'll also add another layer after I answer your question. Our intention is not to, unless there is, unless we are responding to something that is deeply alarming related to the COVID situation, the remote academy will end. As of, uh, we may run aspects of it this summer for students that want and need summer programming, but, but that will, that will be condensed and, and it will end as we enter into the fall, ideally in person in the fall and with all of our students. The other piece that I think your, your question gives me the opportunity to, to address is that, I, I would guess if you went through the history in the past decade of Williamstown Elementary School, there is some, there is some transition of teachers every year from one grade level to a different grade level in order to address larger class, larger cohorts and smaller cohorts going, moving up in grades. So, so between, you know, even like getting a little further into the weeds, we may find that that actually allows us to reinstitute the full day that, that, that type of logic allows us to, to, to open up the, the full-day pre-K section without actually needing to hire a new FTE that's not reflected in the FY21 budget. So that remains to be seen, but we think that potential is there. And I hope I, I addressed your, your concerns.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions here as we venture forward? So right now, I'm going to scroll all the way down to the third to the last page of, of this document. Actually, before we do that, I'm going to go to the second to the last page, the FY22, Chapter 70, 71, and Charter Aid Apportionment to School Budgets headed page. So this, again, guided by the regional agreement, guided by the formulas that are embedded within it, is, is how we determine how we take the lump sum funding that comes in from the state in Chapter 70, 71, and charter reimbursement and apportion that across our three schools. It's based on a, on a blended vision of the equalized valuations of the two towns. And in FY22, we do have an updated EQV set from, from what, what was available last year at the time of budget development and acceptance. The, the EQVs come out every two years, which is worth noting that, that these will be the EQVs that we live in for this fiscal year upcoming as well as the one following. And then the foundation enrollments. The foundation enrollments are the enrollments that we tally as of October 1st for reporting to the state that indicate the students the students that are present from the member towns at each of our three schools. So based on, on those formulas, we, we then calculate how much of that revenue from the state we will attribute to each of our three schools. That's part one. Part two is once we, once we apportion that revenue to the schools, and again, all of this flows through onto that cover page that, that we, that we looked at when we first got going here. We also need to determine within the school that serves members of or community members of both of our two member towns. We need to determine how to further apportion its operating and capital requirements. So looking at its operating requirements, Mount Greylock Regional Schools' operating requirements, once we take all of the other revenue streams into account, we apportion the remaining costs based on the five-year trailing average of each of the two member towns' contributions to the population of Mount Greylock Regional School. Uh, and as we look at the FY twenty one to FY twenty two movement, it, it is visible that the town of Lanesboro is, is comprising a, a slightly larger percentage of the overall student population at Mount Greylock versus the town of Williamstown. That's a shift that, that is a bit of a reversal from trends over the last five to 10 years. And then as we look at the capital costs associated with the new Mount Greylock Regional School, the splits there are based on both the five-year trailing average as well as the relative EQVs, the equalized valuations based on the residential and commercial property values of each of the two towns. And what you end up here with in the bottom right-hand corner is how we split the, the capital costs at, or for Mount Greylock Regional School. And that again, because of the, the fluctuations in both the enrollment numbers as well as the EQVs of the two towns, Lanesboro is seeing a slightly larger percentage of the Mount Greylock Regional School costs there than they did in previous years. Now, if we jump back to the third from the last page, it is, um, this is the, the detailed view that again feeds into the first page of how we apportion the net operating assessment needs from our three schools to the two member towns. For the two elementary, well, let's, let's take first the minimum local contributions. Minimum local contribution is a, a number provided by the state for each of our two towns dictating the minimum that that town is expected to provide for the operation of the regional school district. That minimum local contribution is because of the way the regional agreement needed to work, apportioned out to each of the two schools that that member town is responsible for funding. The percentage of the minimum local contribution for the town of Lanesboro with the two point three six three six oh two country, expected minimum local contribution from the town of Lanesboro is apportioned out to Lanesboro Elementary School and Mount Greylock Regional School based on the percentage of Lanesboro students who are at Lanesboro Elementary School versus the percentage of students from Lanesboro that are at Mount Greylock Regional School. That determines the minimum local contributions and then how, how those are apportioned out to each of the, each of the school buildings. And then the above minimum local required contribution or requested contribution is for the two elementary schools, it's simply the, the full amount. So the, the local town funds the remainder for its local elementary school while the two-town share in the Mount Greylock Regional School costs based on that five-year trailing average of the two-member town's contribution to the school population at Mount Greylock Regional School. So all of this right here then feeds into that first page that we are looking at in terms of the, the operating assessments broken down from Mount Greylock Regional School and for each of the two elementary schools. Once we're able to put aside all of, all of that math that determines how costs are shared, then we can get into the nitty-gritty of breaking down the gross operating budget into line-by-line detail. Now, it's my preference tonight to not attempt to scroll down to the, through the five hundred and six or so lines that exist in this budget. What I think is helpful is one, knowing that what Dr. McCandless presented at the outset represents the, the commitments that are being made within the budget that is before you. The other thing that's important to note is that over the last two weeks or over the next two weeks, we are going to undergo a significant renovation to the descriptions of those accounts. This is something that the district has been looking forward to for the last few years. When, when we brought the, the three districts into one K through twelve district, part of, part of what happened as a part of bringing that together quickly was that the, the chart of accounts, all, all of those names that are in the descriptions, they were brought together nearly verbatim from where they had been previously. Now, what that does is it leaves us where there are many lines that are like across the three schools in terms of where funding is going, but they carry three different names, which makes it fairly difficult to understand how the same type of thing is being, what type of expenditure, what level of expenditure exists at each of the three schools. We also have situations where we have duplicative accounts that make it relatively challenging to figure out what is going where. And that's something that, that the team internally has been really excited to try to move forward with. And so what you can expect over the course of the next two weeks is that we will perform a fairly significant renaming of these accounts and we will provide a, a document that does a crosswalk from old name to new name. As of right now, you have a document that maps directly on to where we were in FY twenty one, FY twenty in terms of account names. So another reason to not dive into every line item tonight, if possible, is that those line items and their names will change over the course of the next couple of weeks. So trying to, to memorize and determine specifics right now would perhaps not be the, the most rewarding effort when you, when you look at the final budget that will come before you in a couple of weeks. So that was a lot of monologue.
Joe, we can also note that not, yet another reason to not dive into every line is that the finance subcommittee did go over, if not line by line, then many of the lines in deep, more detail last night. So we did review and represent the school committee in terms of that due diligence.
Thank you, Carrie. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, normally during this process, the public would be able to come up to the podium and ask questions. I don't totally know how to do that. But I guess there's, there's some way, and I apologize, I know Michelle can explain this to the audience. I know there's a way to raise your hand, but I've never been able to. I just do this very technologically savvy.
Christina, it should be in reactions.
Okay.
Depending on the, the software. Sorry, that's Siri. Depending on the software that people have, it may be available in reactions.
Yeah, I see it as a clapping hand, not a... But Julia is raising her hand, which is great. Michelle, do you want to?
I was just gonna say you can do it through reactions, but you can also open participants. And at the bottom of the list of participants says raise hand.
Great. So I would invite anyone who would like to ask a question to raise their hand. Knowing that we will go more in depth in two weeks, right, Joe?
Yes, I, I, I think the, the upcoming meetings of the finance subcommittee, we, we, we will continue to go line by line as, as that evolves. At the full school committee level, I, I, I hope the, the questions and the comments will, will typically veer more in the direction of programmatic changes, staffing changes, what, what that means for the district as a whole, just so that we don't get too bogged down, but everything is fair game for sure.
Great, thank you. It looks like Julia has her hand up.
I initially did it to just test it and then I thought, no, I do have, I do have a question. I, in Jake's presentation, he asked that he looks to us about the DB. Everyone uses a different order of the words, but the DEIB, the, the, that position. And we certainly heard public comment, you know, seek that position. And I first, just from a process perspective, is now the time we should, okay. And so maybe it's less of a question, but maybe a point of advocacy I might make. And that is, I really appreciated how Jake described a desire and commitment for that position, but a need to clearly define the position first. And I think I, I probably am one who would say, let's just go hire the person because we know we're going to need someone. But I, I appreciate the desire to take our time to do it. So I'm just gonna, I don't know if this is a point of advocacy, a question or a statement, but I want, if this is the time to talk about it, I want to make sure I got that up there.
Thank you, Julia. Okay. Oh, Jose has his hand up. You're on mute, Jose.
Too many buttons here. I can't, I can't raise my hand and unmute. No, I'll just, just follow on from Julia and I, and I think this is just a question for, for Jake here. Just for feedback or, or maybe no, a request for some detail about the consultants that the district is looking to hire. I think from my perspective and my experience, the district has a lot of work to do in terms of building trust with families of color and families who have students of color in the district and, and also who choose to, to send their children to schools outside the district. I think there's a perception that there's a need for a professional who, who truly understands both scholarship and practice in diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And so I think my initial reaction is that, you know, we, we should pursue this position as soon as possible to get that expertise embedded in the district to support both the professional development that you laid out as being a need that has been a need for a number of years and been a practice for a number of years in our district. I think some folks would, would, would say that that practice has been ineffectual, you know, perhaps because we haven't had that, that expertise to lean on and inform and direct. But going, going back to the consultants that the district is interacting with and is considering to hire, you know, Jake, in terms of how you see things playing out, you know, there's the potential, well, the feedback we'd get from consultants, feedback we'd get from the community that would all inform the description of the position that we're looking for. Is that how you're, you're seeing things? I'll stop speaking because I'll just keep speaking, so I'll hit mute.
I, I don't want to interrupt you in any way, Jose. So, you know, our, our, our hope is that the, so some expert facilitation by way of a consultant or a consulting group. You know, certainly, certainly we would, we would value the opinion of the consultant on, on, on what, how, who this, this position should be structured. But I think in some ways leaning more on the consultant to help us facilitate the right conversations, the right way with our community. Because we know for certain that I'm just going to speak for myself purely. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put a shadow or anything over anybody else. So, so speaking for me as a superintendent, as a person, as a leader, as an educator, I know that I have the potential in many ways to do harm when I'm trying to do good. Because I am who I am and my experiences are what my experiences are. So, and, and I also know that we have earning trust is a magnificently important and big job. And you cannot afford false starts or ask for do-overs. You, you can, and in many cases you will get a do-over or another do-over. However, I, I respect this work and I respect the individuals that we are trying to better serve and their allies better and more than to accept false starts. So, so I guess, yeah, I, I, I am looking for the, for, and, and again, this is a community conversation. But, but ideally for, for, for my vision, which I think represents where the, represents where the administration is, we would like some help with facilitating the conversations themselves and allowing, you know, community voice to deeply inform how we structure this position, what we ask of this position, how we, how we even go about hiring this position, because I know there's expertise in this community about how to build job descriptions, advertising postings that are inviting rather than excluding. So I, I, I don't know that I've answered like the heart of your question, but that's where I am with this. But, but I, like you, I see some real merit to, let's do this now. Let's not wait even until the fall. Let's do it now. I, I will though ultimately say it may not be a matter of if, but for me, it remains a matter of when and, and how we get there. And, and I, and I, I, I think the larger community, including the voices that have been advocating for this position, but, but even beyond those voices would be really helpful in, in how we think through this, how we structure it, how we hire for it.
I'll, I'll just follow up quickly with a, a question about process in terms of how you envision these conversations happening and how you envision the district being informed by, by the community, community needs and experiences. And what I was gonna say, I was gonna ask the, do you see this as being a process that takes place over the course of a year, for instance? Meaning that by the end of, by the time we, we were here in twenty twenty two, you know, we, we feel confident that we, we know what we're looking for. And a year from now, we're, we're ready to, or do you see this, should, in essence, should we be budgeting for half a year's worth of a position or, or during this fiscal year? Would we be ready to look for someone at some point during the next academic year?
That's a really important question. The answer is no on, on is there a need to, to, to do a year of process for this? I, I think by the next time we meet as a, as a, you know, with the school committee, we will have a better idea of some, some other partnerships that may bear fruit in, in giving us flexibility to do that, to do just that, that if we get to October of twenty twenty one and we're there, we can do that. You know, the, the, the expert facilitation for the conversations though, I, is, is a happening this spring and summer thing, so we hit the ground running ideally by mid to end of summer and, and we're opening the school year that way with, with student voice, with family voice, with, with community voice. So I, I, I appreciate that question because that's really, I don't envision us needing to wait a full year. But, but, and we may have means to do that.
That sounds great to me. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
There's a community hand up. Is that Aruna or?
Hi, I'm, I'm Priya DeSousa. I'm a student at Greylock. I, I just wanted to sort of add on to what Jose was saying initially. I, I really do encourage a position like this, but it, it, I think regaining the trust of a lot of the, you know, non-white people in this community is really important because I think we've been, you know, as the, you know, non-white inhabitants of Berkshire County, we've been feeling sort of left out in a lot of these conversations regarding diversity and racial equity. we've been feeling sort of left out in a lot of these conversations regarding diversity and racial equity. I, I just, I just want to, you know, I hope that when you're looking for consultants, that you're looking for consultants that perhaps aren't white or are people of color, you know? I, I think um, talking with my peers who are non-white and even talking with, you know, parents and people at Williams College, it's been difficult for young people to adjust to like high school, middle school, everything without a network of uh, non-white instructors, which we've, you know, we really don't have that here. So um, I just hope that behind the scenes as well, if not, you know, interacting with students, there will be um, non-white people in this, you know, this process for, you know, um, D E I B stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Next up on the agenda is school committee discussion of the FY22 budget, which we've sort of been doing. I don't know if anybody has anything else that they want to add. Okay, so moving right along, next up is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the February 25th, 2021 school committee minutes?
So moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Hold on one second. Steve, did you want me to clarify what I was saying for the medical personnel or are we just gonna leave it as a on the second plus, on page 10? I think my brilliant idea there was that they're non-COVID facing healthcare workers. And I stand by that statement, actually.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Roll call alphabetically, please.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Green, I.
Johnson, I.
Okay, I think we've lost Steve. But that motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is Mount Graylock Regional School Principal update. And I see Mr. Schutz is on.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I, I have a brief update about a cer- our most recent survey. And then I'm going to yield the rest of my time to one of our student groups, the GMSU. So uh, our, the most recent survey that was done in January, closed on January 25th. And I recently sent that out to families, but um, we didn't have the complete data by the, the last school committee meeting. So I just wanted to update folks. So it's allowed us to examine our approach to both the hybrid and remote models. And I think it's important to, to review this and to note it, even though we are moving towards a more in, to more in-person learning. So specifically, it's allowed us to identify areas that students, staff and families are experiencing both success, but also areas that we can reexamine and try to provide more support. So first, when it comes to our staff, it's clear that what they need aren't, isn't physical in nature. It's more focused toward pedagogy and pedagogical support. And although the staff has, have access to resources and support, we need to broaden and enrich the type of professional development that we offer staff. It should be, it should aim to, to help them build their, their bag of tricks, their repertoire of strategies that they use in a hybrid sort of environment. I'd like to specifically call attention to the, our pacing report provided by the staff. So we asked staff, um, on a one to five scale, one being way behind in content or curriculum of previous years and five being way ahead of where they typically are in previous years, our staff average was a 2.4. So 2.5 would be right where we normally are and so we're, we're just about there. And again, this was um, feedback provided by staff. Talking, transitioning quickly to, to families and students, their, their responses indicated that the content covered, time with staff and pacing of the day was just right. It was a just right, too much, not enough survey. The feedback prompted us to examine our homework structures, specifically. We had some mixed results about this process. So this is something we are continually exploring with our curriculum leaders and with our staff. And what, another, another indicator, although it wasn't a majority, there were many families that reported feeling overwhelmed. And so there, there were, uh, there were no specific comments in that area. So we are going to dive deeper. And we continue to dive deeper on both individual levels and across the board to provide not only the necessary but more precise support, albeit academic, social, emotional or behavioral. And on a side note, I would encourage families that are, that did report feeling overwhelmed to reach out. We do, um, we do often have folks that reach out and we examine what we can do on an individual basis to help support both families and students. In a general sense, the, the survey showed us lots of things to celebrate. Our students have a healthy attendance rate. I think it was 84, 85% of our students have a 90% or higher daily attendance rate. They're satisfied with the pacing and the content. They're satisfied with their time with staff and the delivery of curriculum that and the delivery of curriculum is on par with where we normally are in years past. So with that being said, we do understand that the social and emotional struggles that families and students face are very real. And we are committed to doing what we can to support them. And in the, while we're doing that, reflecting and improving our practice and our protocols. So that sums up my, my brief summary of the survey. So the, the next section I would like to introduce, oh, do we want to do questions?
Well, I have a question about the survey specifically, but I can do it at the end if you want.
We might as well do it now. Because I'm gonna turn it over to, to Priya.
Okay, so I just have a cur- I'm curious in terms of the response to the survey. How many responses did you get? Like what percentage of the staff and what percentage of the parents?
Staff, it was, it was, I don't have those numbers on the top of my head, but I can get it back to you. It was, it was a decent amount. Staff was pretty high and students, I, I remember it not being ish, an issue when we were analyzing the data. But I don't remember what it exactly was.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see if there's any other hands up, so I guess I will just keep going. So the Mount Graylock Multicultural Student Union, or GMSU for short. The GMSU helps educate students and staff around diversity issues in our society and aims to help destroy common stereotypes. Our advisors are Ms. Mrs. Mary McDonald and Mrs. Liza Barrett. And tonight, um, the Priya De Souza, who we've all just met, who is an active member and I believe one of the not founding members, uh, because the, the, the group has been reinvigorated. And um, so that has helped the, the group become more active and prevalent. So, um, Priya, I will yield my time to you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so as Mr. Schutz said, I'm sort of one of the uh, reinvigorators of the GMSU. I was its sole member last year. I'm very glad that this year we have had more than one person in attendance of our meetings. But um, so we've sort of, we've had like a spike in membership since the initial Zoom bombing incident. And since then, a lot of uh, other people from outside, from both inside Graylock and outside Graylock have asked to speak with us and work with us. We've, you know, we've talked to people from the school paper and uh, you know, we've had joint meetings with the student council. But we've also, uh, we're in the process of talking to her, Aseel Alwab from the Davis Center and you know, people on the Williams campus who are interested in um, working with a group of high school students about um, racial equity issues. We've, uh, beyond that, um, we were recipients of a C-Fund grant. So we've been using that to bring back former, um, A Better Chance students to speak with our club in, you know, closed meetings, but also have open meetings to the student body to talk about their experiences. And uh, beyond that, we have been speaking with a a performance artist who's now based in New York, but grew up uh, here and is a Mount Graylock alum, Sasha Yano and a member of the uh, Diversity Inclus- Inclusion and Racial Equity Committee, um, the sort of Select Board Committee. Bilal Ansari, um, they got a contract with Willie Net to uh, film a, a multi-part sort of series, sort of discussing the events of you know, discussing the sort of history of racism in Williamstown and the events in Williamstown surrounding the WPD and, um, you know, the, the sort of police reform and uh, the discussion around racial equity in our community over the summer. And uh, the GMSU will play a part in that. Filming will start sort of after the school year ends for me at least. But um, we're hoping that uh, you know, GMSU members will still be interested. But um, we've, you know, we've been trying to branch out as much as we can to, to be a more um, robust organization. Because we've, you know, uh, since uh, since the um, initial sort of Zoom bombing incident, we've found that um, even you know, that people are still vulnerable in a way that we didn't imagine they could be. Now that everything is sort of online. So I, like our, our main sort of goal, I think for the past few weeks has just been trying to, you know, make our, the, you know, black and brown students at our school feel like they have a space. Because that, that has been really important to us. That is, I, I think especially the, for the, you know, non, non-white members of the club, having a space where um, you can sort of speak freely about experiences can, is really, it's really powerful. You know, I, I think um, being in a room full of people who don't necessarily look like you or don't come from the same background as you, it can be exhausting. It, it, to just, you know, have to sort of function function in a, a sort of terms where you have to assimilate to a sort of cultural monolith that is expected uh, of um, students at Mount Graylock. Even though, you know, there is this, um, there is, I, I think um, out of, I, I've moved around a lot as a kid and out of all of the places I've lived, I, I feel like um, Graylock has been a really sort of it's been inclusive, but it's also been colorblind in a way that I think is problematic. I think there is sort of this desire to be one sort of one culture in a way that I, I'm not sure has been helpful. Because I think that like even, even then, there's still an expectation to assimilate and not just be just be a person. But uh, yeah, I think, I, I mean, having, having a space where you can just not have to worry about like, oh, is it gonna sound weird if I say this? Or like, oh, will people think I'm overreacting when I talk about this? That's been really powerful, both for me and, you know, younger members of the GMSU have been reaching out to me on social media or through email and saying like, I, I'm really, I really appreciated this conversation we had. Like, it, it feels good to talk about this stuff and not like be judged when I talk about it. So yeah, I, I, I just wanting to protect peers is really, has been really important to us. And I think wanting to protect our underclassmen has been really important to the upperclassmen for the past, you know, for the past year. That's been, you know, our, our, our biggest priority, which, you know, considering the, the Zoom bombing incidents both seem to have happened in um, sort of classes that are younger than me. That's been like sort of important to me. So yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's what we've been doing for the past few weeks. We've, our, our meetings are every two weeks. So the past month or so has been focused mostly on planning next steps and then um, talking to ABC students.
Thank you, um, Priya. Before we open it up, um, if any members have questions, I just wanna say that we, we appreciate the, the opportunity that the group provides for students to learn from one another. In addition to the, the forums and the um, the forums and the educational advocacy that you guys promote around diversity and cultural awareness. And I don't, I can't see if there are any questions.
I, I, Jake, if I could just say thank you, Priya, for speaking and being so honest and open. It is really appreciated deeply. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really, I, I'm so happy to have this opportunity. I've, you know, I've been sort of getting more involved in local activism in the past year and um, just like feeling like um, voice, like my voice and voices of, you know, my peers are being included in these conversations means so much to me.
If I can just add to that, Priya. First to echo Christina and my gratitude, I'm sure I speak on behalf of all for you coming here tonight and sharing so openly of your own experience. And importantly, for the leadership that you're taking on in the school. I, I, I consistently am impressed by Mount Graylock students who are going to show adults what needs to happen. And I think you are an example of that. And um, I, I look forward to seeing all the ways in which you are able to impact the school community. You are, I, you're, this work that you're doing is so critical and so important. And I hope you heard, we all want to support you, but at the end of the day, it's you who needs to help lead that way. And so I'm so grateful that you're stepping into that.
Jose?
Yeah, I'll just, just follow up and, and, and start off by reiterating, Priya, we owe you so much. And, and the collective that you have helped organize and galvanize at, at Mount Graylock. What I want to, um, I think something that is, uh, is true clearly at Graylock and, and across campuses across the country, you know, where students of color are frequently persistently being asked to be their own advocates for social change. are frequently persistently being asked to be their own advocates for social change and equity, to carry that burden. I think we heard in statements earlier today that, you know, there, I think the administration, the district looks to your group, the GMSU for, for feedback, guidance and advice. I, I worry that that's not fair. I worry that that puts an unfair burden on our students of color who are just, just trying to navigate the space of Mount Graylock and trying just to be, as you said, a person, you know, who, just to be themselves. And what I'd love, if you feel comfortable sharing with us today at this moment, you know, what you would like from the district and for the, from the administration, what you'd like us to hear about the support that you, you'd like to see, that you don't see, but that you would like to see at Graylock and across, across our campuses. I'll, I'll stop there and, and just finish by saying, we, we owe you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, I think the, the biggest thing when I, I've talked to, you know, members of the GMSU and then just, you know, my friends about this. And I think the one thing that everyone sort of sighs and wishes they could have is, you know, a, a, a non-white member of faculty and staff, which is not possible, like, or not, not impossible, but it's sort of a, a big ask. You know, we, we, we sort of, we're aware that that could be, you know, not possible, but you know, I, I think it's really wonderful to have spaces where you, like where you're listened to and where you feel heard, but in the, in the end, it's really sort of difficult to find that support from white people, if that makes sense, like, I, I, it's really sort of, there's people can hear you, but that hearing you can only do so much. I think a lot of my peers, a lot of my peers and myself, you know, we, we having someone who has those shared experiences, who has experienced those, you know, these microaggressions, we've been talking a lot about microaggressions in the past few months and you know, having someone who's experienced those, who's not just, you know, read about those or heard people talk about those or like seen those happen to other people, but who's had those, you know, who's had these interactions happen to them, these interpersonal reactions, interpersonal interactions, these, you know, experienced systemic racism. I, I, I think, you know, having someone who's known those struggles has, is really important and that sort of support, finding that support beyond, you know, our parents can be, can be difficult, just given the geography of you know, where we are. Yeah, I mean, I think that, that was sort of the, the biggest thing we, you know, sigh about, but I, I think, I think it, it has been overwhelming that so much of the response to these issues of, you know, racist violence against our peers has been, you know, relegated to us. We are, we are kids. There's not a single member of the GMSU who's old enough to vote. You know, we yeah, we, we, it, it can feel like a lot, but you know, I, I also do really, I, I've really appreciated the support that we've received both from, you know, the Mount Graylock administration, Dr. McCandless has been really helpful in our responses to, you know, these incidents and the Davis Center at Williams College has been a really great resource and Dreah Finley, who's also on the DIRE committee, has been, you know, reaching out to us and they've been super helpful with, you know, dealing with some of the, the pressure that some of us have been feeling from that. So I, I think just, you know, I think it, it can feel like a lot, but we have, we have a network of people who are willing, are willing to help us. So I, I think just, you know, extending that network would be, would be helpful.
Thank you, Priya.
All right. So that is all I had for my update.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is superintendent updates.
Can I, can I just make one, one quick little, Priya, thank you so much. And one thing that you said has really just stuck in the bottom of my stomach instantly. I mean, among many things, but but one is that this district should be able to and must employ people who, who can have those shared experiences and who can represent each person within the district. And so it's, it's not an aspirational goal. It's, it's a must. And I think that's incredibly important, important for you to hear, but for us to do. And, and until we do it, you know, it's only words, but, but that's, I didn't want to let that pass just because it really stuck with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will add my voice to the thanks and to the admiration for Priya and, and her colleagues. What a, what a what a hopeful thing to hear you speak here tonight. And what an optimistic thing about our potential to, to, to be better and do better for everybody. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. And with that, thank you. Now I'll go into boring the socks off of everybody with, with yet another lengthy superintendent's report. So let me share my screen and find the right screen to share. This looks good. Can you see that? Head nod. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Let me get into presentation mode. So just, just really four items tonight. Here's sort of the table of contents of very brief school choice update, a very brief MCAS scheduling update of a, a brief Zoom incident update with the most recent Zoom incident. And then a, a much lengthier time on learning regulations update for all of you and for the, for the community. So school choice, I, I believe I led you to think at the last meeting that we would be bringing forward our, our school by school, grade by grade openings for a vote tonight. That is, we're simply not there. As with much of this year, we're, we're still trying to sort through layers of information and sometimes misinformation to identify school and grade specifics related to school choice openings. So we, we are confident that we will have enough data and have done the right things with it to bring forward the school by school, grade by grade choice opening slots for you to vote and approve in April. We, we do anticipate that, that not being fully sure what, what this upcoming year is going to bring. That, that most slots will be for siblings and for inter-district school choice needs that allow families' lives to work. We may have a few openings that are just true school choice openings, but I do not anticipate a, a large, large number because we do have a number of siblings that are making requests and we really want to try to honor those as much as we can. MCAS schedule update. Again, this is very brief. We, we just received this information very late last week. MCAS, as, as you likely know, will be offered this year. It will, at least as far as we know right now, although I, I think the federal government may be making some overtures about freeing states from the requirement for this year. Nonetheless, there's a large part of me that is hopeful that we do press forward with MCAS actually. Because it's, it's non-punitive this year, and I think it would give us some very helpful information about how, how our students actually did this year and how far they've progressed. But you can see the dates here for grades three through eight, grades three, four and five, ELA math and science, technology and engineering. Tentative dates for May 10 through June 11. Grade six, seven and eight, those dates are still to be determined and high school testing dates are to be determined at this point as well. So I just wanted to make sure that the, that the school committee and anybody that's interested in the public was, was updated on that. The, the most recent Zoom incident. I, I have a, a genuine level of disgust that our, our students and our neighboring students who, you know, whether, whether they were the actual perpetrators of this most recent incident, which, which happened in a classroom. This, this, this really has to stop. It is, it is so humanly inappropriate and whether it's racially motivated or whether it's you know, under that, that big umbrella of, of, while I was just fooling around, it's deeply offensive on several levels. And so this most recent one happened in a class. There were not many kids in the class. It was a deeply offensive song with, with racially charged lyrics and sexually charged lyrics. The, the IP finally being traced down was a, was a VPN that was out of North Carolina was as far as we could get. The police department is again helping us look into this and, and leaning their investigative shoulder into this. And if we are able ultimately to identify a, a, a person or persons who made this happen, we will move forward in the way we move forward, which is being, being clear with our community about it. If it's, if it's a younger person, making it a, a learning opportunity as well as an opportunity to experience a consequence so that they can reflect on the, on the hurt that they have caused others. And, and we do keep trying and successfully just tweaking Zoom to make this more and more difficult. So I, I completely wish that we could bring you great clarity into who did this and why they did this and what we were going to do about it. I am as unsatisfied as, as I'm sure many of you are. The high school administration, the middle and high school administration are as unsatisfied as, as all of the rest of us and we will keep doing what we need to do to look into these events when they happen. I will say to our student community, enough is enough. You're, at, at best, you're interrupting learning and at worst, you're deeply offending people and hurting another human being who has feelings and just like you do as the perpetrator. And we will continue to make work around being more humane and, and better human beings and making sure everybody is included as, as a full part of our community in that work. And now the, the most lengthy time that I will ask of you in this report. This is, this is related to the time on learning regulations that I believe were adopted about a week ago in a meeting of the Board of Ed, Massachusetts Board of Education. I believe these passed by a fairly overwhelming vote of eight to three. I did watch the meeting, what I was able to, to fit into my schedule, a lot of good give and take. And I do believe the final vote was, was eight to three. So the, the way that these next several slides are going to go is kind of a call and response. The direct quotes from DESI are in bold and are in quotation marks from the guidance document, which was, I think, sixteen or seventeen pages long. Our responses and interpretations are included in a bulleted list beneath each bolded quoted piece from the, from the DESE guidance. And then of course, the, the entire document is available at this link. So if, if you, you, you know, Google even Massachusetts Board of Ed time on learning regulations or, or put that into a search engine, it will certainly come up. So now digging into the meat of this, the, the plan will begin with a return to in-person school for elementary schools, grades K through five. In our case, we are looking at that as grades K through six, because that is the structure of our elementary schools. As of April 5, 2021, the department will require elementary schools to use a full-time in-person learning model for instructional hours to count toward structured learning time. So this is not optional. This is not subject to overrule by, by the superintendent, by the school committee. The committee and the super, via the superintendent can request a very temporary waiver granted in only the most extraordinary of circumstances. And I am seriously doubtful that, that more than a small handful of waivers will be granted, if even a small handful. So I am moving forward anticipating that this is the law and we adhere to the law as practitioners of education here in Massachusetts. Time that is not spent in learning, learning in person will be required to be, to be made up. Sorry for the typo. I left out the word up. Via a longer school year, mandatory summer programming or additional school hours in the fall. I suppose hypothetically Saturday, Sunday school, you know, could also be an option. The, the point is for these, for this grade span, remote time will no longer count toward the 900 hours of instruction or 180 days, or in this case of this year, 170 days. Exceptions that can be made to this time not counting. If an individual within the class needs to quarantine, if a cohort or an entire class needs to quarantine, that time does indeed count for that student and that school, that that's really the only exception. The next quote from DESI, importantly, families will retain the choices to whether to send their children to school in person or have them learn remotely through the end of the school year. Districts may also apply for a waiver from DESI. Waivers will be considered in a limited set of circumstances described later in this document. I do believe we touch on that later. Elementary families in the Mount Graylock Regional School District at this point, as we look toward this first milestone of April 5th, will have the option of transitioning students from hybrid into the remote academy. That will be the, the lone means at the elementary school of, of going remote, should a family choose to go remote in a reaction to this April 5th date that is looming before us. A, a student that is going to be remote in K through six, pre-K through six will only be able to do so through the remote academy. Middle and high school families, when we get to that point, will continue to be able to join classes via Zoom, as they have been all year. A survey will be going out by the middle of next week to gather families' intentions on whether they intend to send their students full-time to school or whether they intend to go fully remote. We are not asking about summer programming in this. At the time that I put this presentation together, we anticipated that the survey would ask about summer programming. We did not want to convolute or confuse the survey. So we will be asking about summer programming at a later date. The next quote from the DESE, since June 2020, DESI guidance has consistently noted that three feet in classrooms is a safe standard for physical distancing when masks are worn and other mitigation strategies are in place. Based on guidelines from the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics, our guidance balanced the urgent need to bring students in the Commonwealth back to in-person learning while minimizing the risk to students, staff and the families and their families. While districts should space students further than three feet when feasible, evidence demonstrates that the additional risk associated with six feet as opposed to three feet is low. evidence demonstrates that the additional risk associated with six feet as opposed to three feet is low when masks are worn and other mitigation strategies are in place. So, you know, our interpretation of this is that six feet is no longer the rule, three feet is now the rule. Six feet however, does remain the rule for when students are eating or drinking. And it remains the recommended appropriate distance between children and adults. And it also remains the recommended distance between adults in a school setting. So the three feet is really particular to the distance between children and adults. Our children with each other. The recommended distance, we try to shoot for six feet between children and kids. And, and then between adults or children and adults and, and then between adults. And of course, masks will continue to be mandatory for the full day with the exception of, of lunch and/or snack and, and, and outdoor mask breaks. We are just, for your information, we are looking into a host of solutions to try to make lunch work safely. We're, we're anticipating a return of the middle and high schools. So we're also looking for solutions for our upper grades as well. But the real priority for, for what remains of this week is for our elementary school students and staffs. The next DESI quote, and it's a, it's a lengthy one. This is really the, the timeline. So I'm not going to read this quote word for word. I, I think most of you are aware that the elementary school phase, grades K through five, pre-K is actually exempt from this, we'll touch on that in a bit. Grades K through five, the, the day that we begin in-person full day, full classroom education is Monday, April 5th. For middle schools, which the state defines as grades six, six through eight, in our case, it is grades seven and eight, districts and schools will be required to shift their learning model effective Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. That's the week after spring break. Students that, who have traveled to restricted states over the spring break are, we are allowed to request that they shift their return until April 26th, which is a, a full week after the, after the break. I, I believe I'm just looking off to my calendar, Wednesday, the 28th. I think that might be a, okay, so students would be learning remotely for the entire week of the 26th if they have done restricted travel and are quarantining. And so they would be back in on Monday, May 3rd. And at the high school, and I, I know we all hear and we're, we're gripped by the, the community input about what this means for our high schoolers, particularly our seniors, who will not get another bite of this apple. The state has not weighed in on when that is going to happen. They have promised us two weeks of advance notice. If we believe we're able to do that or do some piece of that safely before the state mandates it, we are certainly working toward that. And, and, and as I said, we're, we're planning particularly around lunch and monitoring lunch and making sure lunch is safe and making sure classrooms can accommodate bigger students with three feet of distancing, we will do so. So this is a roadmap for the, for the timing. This is a suggested roadmap. There are some hard dates in here. DESI is certainly encouraging us to move more quickly than their plan outlines if we feel that it's appropriate to do so. And, and we are having those conversations. For those of you who may be watching or watching this later, who are parents or caretakers of high school students, the commissioner has yet to weigh in on events like prom and graduation, although Mount Graylock held a very successful and meaningful graduation last year. So we would fully anticipate at least that for this year. But I do know as the parent of a senior myself in another school district, at this point, the prom is about the only thing that is, is occupying her world. So other than, you know, successfully finishing the year academically. So the college of her choice will continue to, to hold by their acceptance. Moving on, the, the next quote from the DESE, and I will read this in its entirety. Because regulations have the force of law, once the commissioner makes the determination that hybrid and remote learning will no longer count toward structured learning time, a school committee vote on which learning model to adopt is not necessary because full-time in-person learning will be the default required model. Remote learning should only be provided, shouldn't be provided only if parents, guardians opt out of in-person learning for the remainder of the school year and for students who must remain home due to a COVID-19 related issue. If a district intends to submit a waiver request, DESI encourages the district to hold a school committee vote on the content of the waiver, that this is a local decision. I assure you, I will not be moving forward with a waiver unless directed by the school committee to do so. That was an editorial, that's not a, that's an editorial comment by me, not a, a quote from DESI. Given the need for rapid implementation, superintendents may submit a waiver request to DESI without having first secured a school committee vote. As we said before, earlier in this presentation, this is not optional. This has the full force of law and regulations behind it. I was in a Zoom meeting with, with many other superintendents and the commissioner yesterday. He walked through his thinking for, and his team walked through their thinking for potential waivers. I, I think getting a waiver is going to be like throwing a, a spiral pass with a football through a go-kart tire from 50 yards away. I think that's how likely this is going to be. Including that DESI will send in-person teams out to come and measure and lend you technical support to help you fit all of your students in with three feet of distance. If you are making the claim that you simply cannot do that in multiple classrooms. A temporary waiver may be approved, as I said, in extremely limited circumstances. But, but I will just be gobsmacked if, if waivers are given in, in any number at all. Particularly in, and I look at our school district, you know, our buildings are, are newish as school buildings go in the Commonwealth. We have done lots of actions to mitigate against the spread of COVID. So, you know, whether, whether I like this or not is immaterial. I think at this point, whether the committee likes this or not is immaterial. And I don't say that to be offensive or jerky. I think it's simply true because this is now law and this is now regulation. If indoor and outdoor spaces at the school level are insufficient, districts should look at other spaces not otherwise used by students within the district if available and then consider spaces within the broader community. For instance, individual grade levels within a school could be moved to local community spaces, including nonprofits, businesses or other spaces to expand the physical footprint of classroom space. This makes sense for some of, for one of our schools in particular, that Williamstown Elementary. This, this is a tougher one to wrap one's head around for Mount Graylock and, or for Lanesboro Elementary School. However, we are examining options that include using existing school spaces for purposes other than what they were designed for. Ie, as Mount Graylock has been doing all year, the gymnasium becomes a satellite cafeteria. An auditorium becomes a satellite cafeteria. Rooms that are larger by their varied design may be used for alternative purposes other than for teaching classes. We are also examining using outdoor space for lunches and/or for learning, including looking at renting large tents, particularly for meal service. Strategic use of community resources that are within a reasonable distance of one or more of our schools. And then we are certainly trying to be as creative as we can be. We get lots of feedback from the community about things to, to consider. And we appreciate that feedback and we hope it continues to come in. So we are thinking as broadly and as expansively as we can in this regard. Waivers will not be granted for districts that indicate that they cannot return to in-person learning due to space constraints or feasibility issues, but are maintaining a physical distancing standard in classrooms of greater than three feet. Districts must also have completed an updated survey of families with the information about, about those students have elected to return to in-person instruction and those who have elected to learn remotely. In addition, in limited circumstances where a district is granted a waiver, the waiver will be time limited. And I'm going to break from quoting here. Our understanding is that that is incredibly time limited, talking about days, not weeks. Back to the quote, all districts and schools should expect that they will need to change their models to move closer to full-time in-person learning, five days per week. There again, both from, you know, I'm giving you kind of the greatest hits version of, of the lengthy memo that came from the Commonwealth. I've also been involved with, with some local conversations as well as a webinar or a conference with the commissioner. There are incredibly limited reasons that DESI will even entertain to even consider granting a waiver. A locality is not allowed to say, well, we still believe in six feet, not three feet. Those waivers will not be granted. They will only be granted if we, if, if a district, I don't mean we. If a district can prove that three feet is not workable in enough spaces so as to perhaps not allow the school to function appropriately. It appears very unlikely to me that based on our data, on our space availability and other factors, including incredibly low community transmission rates, both this week and, and in the past couple of weeks, that we will even be in a position to consider a waiver or even a very temporary waiver. As I've said here before, I think lunch is probably our, our greatest concern on a number of levels. It's actually been our greatest concern as we've, as we got back into a hybrid model. So we are going to have to be really creative around how we do lunch without completely disrupting existing school schedules. But we have a good team of people here working on it and, and we will continue to do so until we find appropriate, safe solutions for our community and our students and our staff. So that's, that's sort of what, what I felt. We did an administrative review of, of all 16 pages of this document earlier this week. This was called down from the, the hour, hour and five minutes that we spent doing that all together on a Zoom meeting. And of course, this, these documents are available at, at the following website. And certainly based on emails I received today, lots of people in the community already have accessed this website and are, and are familiarizing themselves with, with the new time on learning regulations. We would anticipate that, you know, as, as we head into fall, barring, barring an outbreak, barring people just throwing in the towel and living life as usual and not continuing to be cautious and to use common sense. You know, we're very hopeful that the fall sees us kicking off a school year that in terms of number of days a week and number of students in the building looks very much the same. It could be that we're starting still with masks and that we're, we're continuing to treat lunch and snacks with kid gloves. And our real hope is, is that that's exactly what the fall brings, a full return. And our, and our sincere hope is also that our graduating seniors head off to a work world or a college world that offers them a, a fuller experience than, than, than has been offered this year. So, you know, in, in concluding this, I'm not going to read this to you. Yeah, I, I am subject on a daily basis and I, and I'm grateful to, to be in the position to be so. I'm, I'm subject to 360 degrees of thought and opinion on this. And I'm subject to, and many of us are in the district. And I think you are on the school committee as well. You're subject to, to 360 degrees of opinion, of interpretation of facts and of emotion. Cause I get it, as, as a dad, I get it. This is emotional. And, 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 and the, the, the full spectrum from being deeply afraid for your child's health and wellbeing or that of your family to just absolute outrage that, that, that we are continuing not to be fully in person. And I know that our staff, the people that we treasure so much because they serve kids day in, day out, in person, remotely. They, they hold that same range of emotions about their own work and their own health and their own concerns. So I, I, I don't know what the answer is. We will continue to work to find it. We will follow the law. That is, I think, an ethical practitioner in, in a position like mine, you follow the law. And we do honor and listen to, and I try to respond to every thought, every opinion, every consideration. And I'll continue to do so. And I'm, and I'm actually quite grateful to folks who help, who help inform our thinking through sharing their thinking with us. We will continue, of course, to be responsible and respectful. We will continue to be humane. And we will continue to work for the best ends for our children and for the people who love our children and care for our children and serve our children. And I thank all of you for your, your close attention to this. And I'll stop the share and we'll happily entertain questions about any of this.
Michelle?
Thank you, Jake. I know that's a pretty complicated, really long memo. So I appreciate the Cliff Notes. My question is whether or not you're going to need additional resources for supervision of these remote spaces that aren't typically, like normally you'd have one or two people in the cafeteria supervising the kids eating. But it sounds like they're going to be a little more spread out than that.
If, if you have three or four cafeterias, then you go from needing a couple of people to needing eight or nine people. And so yes, that is part of our planning for this. You know, the, the, yes. I'm getting tongue tied here as I enter my 13th or 14th hour of the workday. But, and, and I'm gonna, I'm really not going to try to editorialize on any of this because nobody cares what Jake thinks, they care what the superintendent thinks. Yes, we, we, I, I think the resource is necessary to do this in a way that's safe and appropriate and respectful of, of health and safety in the ways that I think we need to be. It will absolutely require additional resources and, and we're prepared to, and I think have the capability to expand those resources as we approach the end of the year because it's really important.
Yeah, so that was a follow-up to my question. Do you anticipate having the resources to actually use?
I, I always say yes, and then I try to gauge by how far up on Joe's head his eyebrows go. Misspoke or not, I say that in jest. We, we have been in many, many conversations about that. And with, with Essar money and with, we will, money will not stand in the way of this. The availability of people to come and help could, and we may be me asking for some help of the community, but, but, but we will do what we need to do to comply with the law and serve our students.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think we've had several volunteers, so I think that's a possibility for sure.
Looks like Carrie has a question.
Okay, thanks Christine, I have two questions. One is just to clarify, this was implied in the presentation and I haven't read through word by word the regulations, but it sounds it sounds like even though the schools will be penalized if we don't provide full in-person, the families will not be penalized if they choose to go remote. So by, by requiring essentially, we're required to provide a remote option and we're required to permit families to choose that option, which means that their kids will continue to progress through the grade level. So there isn't a penalty. I guess that's what I mean by penalty.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Carrie, and thank you for saying that. There, there are. I, I hope the way I answer this doesn't, doesn't confuse more than it helps. But but you are correct. Families maintain the option to send their child to a full five days with with all, you know, all students that want to be there and are comfortable being there, being there. Or they can choose a fully, the remote academy. Or at the middle and high school, they can continue to zoom in as we have been doing all year. And there is no penalty to the families. Should we? So that, that's a period after that sentence. This is without penalty to a family. It, there will not be a grade penalty and attendance penalty. There will not be a, a, a situation where students ask to repeat a grade because they have chosen to be remote as opposed to being in person. But while we're discussing penalties, should we as a district choose to go down the path of not complying with this rule? Then it's very clear we would have to make up this time. And I do think forcing families in essence, or or pretending like we can force families to make up time could indeed be perceived as punitive by families. If we say, we're not going to be ready for elementary school until April 26th. And we continue hybrid through April 26th. The state's message to us is, that's fine, but you will need to now add those weeks on to the end of your school year, which I suspect would run us into some practical issues since contracts tend to end as of June 30. So the, and there are certainly penalties for the school district that could include a withholding of Chapter 70 funds. And while we're not as dependent on Chapter 70 funds as some communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's several million dollars. And and so a, a, any action taken to reduce money coming from the state via the Chapter 70 program would be a significant penalty to, to the district, to the schools and to the teachers who serve children and to the children themselves because we would have less money to work with.
Thank you. So my second question, sorry, is about staffing. Do we anticipate having any difficulty staffing our classrooms? You know, I know that we have pool testing and I'm hoping that affords a degree of comfort. But we also have a disconnect between vaccinations and the rolling out of this regulation. So I'm just wondering if we know where our teachers stand on this.
Yeah, we, we seem to have a month, a month's worth of disconnect between prioritizing educators and demanding that educators are back in person five days a week with full classrooms. And and there's, you know, evidence that that we can do this and do so safely, do so very safely. We have been working with the the Magia, the union leadership from day one. I spent a good part of my day answering emails around concern about this and sometimes just responding that, you know, I, I hear you and I understand. I spent some time with a few teachers today who expressed real, real genuine concern, but I think carried it to to actually answer your question. I, I started on November 2nd, I believe, serving the Mount Greylock Regional School District. I have not had a single minute since the beginning of October where I have had any reason to question the professionalism or dedication of of the teachers, of the paraprofessionals, of the custodians, of the, the food service staff, of the clerical and secretarial workers. That's a long way of saying I'm so taken by the professionalism and dedication of the people who actually do the work to make school happen and the staff. I do believe that in the end, there, there will continue to be concern. There will continue to be fear for individuals' own health, the health of their children, the health of all families involved. What I have observed of of our staff, of our colleagues who who work in classrooms is that they, they will show up and they will do their jobs and they will I suspect hold some resentment about, at the state level about the fact that 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 the timing on the, the opening of schools and vaccination availability, we're not in better sync from their perspective, but, but that I believe our staff will do what they need to do and and we are in fairly constant communication with our, with our union leadership colleagues to, to, you know, get a temperature check as well as with individuals, but to make sure we're doing this in a way that, that that is respectful of of who they are and what they do and what they mean to this community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jake, can I ask a question about busing? And, and the impacts that this will have on that if we have to increase our bus runs?
Yes. About three weeks ago, the new bus regulations came out and that would, I, I will, I'm just going to write myself a note because I clearly, I maybe didn't send those to you. Essentially what the new bus regulations do, and they, they came out about two weeks ago. They, they essentially remove almost all distancing requirements on school buses as long as the windows are open. So, you know, whereas at the beginning of this year, we had, you know, there had to be a seat in between. And, you know, you were kind of, if somebody was in the front seat, then on the opposite row, somebody was in the second seat. And then somebody was in the third seat on the right, somebody was in the fourth seat on the left. I, I will, I will send those out to you. If I, if I can't come up with them tonight, I'll send them tomorrow morning. But but essentially bus transportation is back to looking pretty normal, masks on, windows open. So, so that's, that's an excellent question and I'm sorry I haven't communicated the new bus regulations to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jose?
Thanks Christine. I'll start out. I'm hearing the echo, the echo stopped, but I, I just want to start out by embarrassing myself by expressing gratitude to both Jake and Joe for the care, thoughtfulness and time that you both have given this district that I think were on full display in the presentations for, you know, the, the budget presentation and as well Jake is, you know, in this, this conversation that we're having about transitioning back to, to, to fully in-person learning.
Thank you.
I sincerely, sincerely. The question I have, and I think it's, it's a, I, I have and I, and I, it's probably evident, self-evident in, in, in every aspect of my person. I have never taught K through 12. So I, I am imagining myself as a teacher in our school district, particularly in our elementary schools. And the transition from hybrid to remote as scheduled is abrupt. Where the week of March 30th, we're hybrid, the following week, we're right back at it. You know, in terms of a pre-pandemic, I'm assuming a pre-pandemic schedule. In terms of, are we or should we? And maybe we, we should be getting feedback on the preparation time that our teachers might need to successfully transition from what has been months of hybrid to to fully remote. What, what? What are, do we have options? And what are those options if we do have them?
Yeah, I, I would, I would struggle to lay out a menu of options, but I, but I can suggest a couple. We, we do have, you know, our, our Wednesdays, which have been in conversation about the necessity and the usefulness. I, I will tell you, at the elementary level, the Wednesdays right now are really vital to be remote because that's when teachers get most of their planning time and really all of their common planning time stacked together. I, I, as we're, just as we're surveying our families to find out what their intentions are. We have a JLMC and then a problem solving session with the union tomorrow evening. And we've certainly been in touch with, with the union president who is just incredibly communicative. And we're so grateful for that, you know, around concerns and what more could we be doing to to make people feel better about this? And and we, we will be talking substantively about what this transition looks like because you're correct. I think for kids and for teachers, it will be a slight shock to the system to, to, to not be there this week and to be there next week. It is, I accompanied a group of fifth graders on a, on a exercise on, is it Southworth Street that runs, you know, from Route 2 back to the school to, to help them wrap their heads around the size of the universe by, by planning this. Yeah, some of you know what I'm talking about because your kids probably did it. So, and I have to tell you, I, I told the teacher probably a half a dozen times as a high school guy, as a high school person and then a middle and high school principal, and then as a superintendent. I, I look at elementary school teachers the same way I look at professional athletes. I am glad that somebody has the stamina and the organization and the sheer strength to do that work. So I, I think as we consider, you know, now first of all, these will likely not be full class sizes. I do think we'll have some families that, that will choose to, to school their children at home or to move into the remote academy because of very specific concerns. But, but, but I do tell you, I, I got a firsthand view of, of what it's like to be with half a fifth grade class. And, and we will certainly have this transition and what we can do to support and help. Right now, we've simply been putting a lot of energy into communicating how to work through what feels like a really Byzantine process to even get on the list to be vaccinated as an educator. I, I stopped in a building to see a couple of educators personally today because I, I was really, I'm reading it when, when like such frustration comes through in an email, I tend to drop everything and go wanna be within three to six feet of a person. And, and, and it's very real and, and people are spending hours of their time trying to, to get in line for a vaccine. And we want to be understanding and supportive of, of all of these concerns and emotions and this transition. But, but still understanding that we, we need to comply with the, with the law.
Um, Michelle and then Jose?
So, you know, I guess I'll speak from an elementary teacher perspective. That's all I've taught. So it's, I honestly can't imagine doing the upper grades. They're mouthy, you know, I can't even imagine. But what I will say is what I hear from my fellow teachers is exactly what Jake is saying, that the announcements came in the wrong order. So first we found out that we were being forced back to full in-person instruction and then we were told, okay, now you're going to be prioritized. So and, and I will say among the teachers that I work with, they, they don't have five hours to sit on a computer. We can't do that during the day. And so the fact that there are no, no, that's number one. And number two, if it's the two shot and on the second shot, you're ill, how are you going to find subs for all those teachers if they all go on the same day? So there are, there are so many layers to this. Hopping back into instruction, I, most educators I know are looking forward to it. It, as a special educator, I can tell you that scheduling at the beginning of the year is a bear. Right? So once the general education schedule is done, then the special education schedule has to get done. And there's all these pieces that you need to fit together in order to make a cohesive schedule. So that alone is a bear. So there's all these little intricate moving pieces that everybody is kind of like, but wait a minute, don't forget about. And wait a minute, don't forget about, because nobody has had that in their vision necessarily for the last six months. So from an educator's perspective, that's, that's the elementary educator's perspective. That's what it is. And those poor kindergartners are going to be so tired. That's a long day for them in September.
Jose, I think you had a question.
You know, I, I, yeah. Especially hearing, hearing from Michelle here, I think I, as a, I think I, I think I have some genuine concern about about our teachers, you know, in terms of, you know, A, their ability to access the vaccination. And I, and I've heard that unions across the state and perhaps even districts are advocating for, you know, for opportunities for, for teachers to more eas, to more easily access the vaccine rather than through the central Massachusetts sort of, you know, funnel that, that folks are having to fight through. Or, or I guess, you know, I think, what, what's my question? I think I'm just venting, just sort of a cathartic. I, I'm genuinely worried about, about supporting our teachers through this transition. And, and then wondering, you know, perhaps as a, a topic of conversation later, once we hear back from, from the union about what, what teachers would, would like to have for support. Are we or could we be looking at hitting pause during that week of the 30th, the week leading up to fully in-person, you know, is, is that, could that be an option? Could that be, you know, maybe this is a question for, for Michelle and Curtis as, as teachers here in terms of what they can imagine, you know, appropriate support for, for getting this right. What, 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 what that might look like.
Well, first to speak to the issue of the, the clog in the pipeline of vaccine and the fact that Western Mass is just a part of the map Massachusetts, it says there be dragons. The mass vaccination sites that are available on the four days, for those who don't know, the four days that have been set aside specifically for educators, three Saturdays and one Sunday over the coming month. The closest site is in Springfield and the number of spots in that is fewer than the number of teachers in Springfield. Just to be clear, so that first Saturday is probably going to be a wash. If the district, the, the new pre-registration site is launching, I believe, first thing in the morning for those educator-specific days. If the district, and talk about a last minute ask, could somehow put staff on computers to try and get vaccination appointments for teachers? I don't know how you could do this. You would need their insurance information because you needed to register. But if there's any way that we as, as a district can expedite the process from within, and even if it isn't for this Saturday's, first Saturday's appointments, which I think are a week from now. But, but, you know, building something like that to try and increase the number of vaccine appointments available to our teachers, because I, I, I'll tell you, I, I have an appointment on Saturday to get vaccinated, which I only through the great generosity of a dear friend who sat online for hours for a handful of us, am I able to do that? And I'm stunned and incredibly overwhelmed at the privilege of that. What can we do to enable the rest of the teachers in our district to step into the classroom? to step into the classroom with the confidence that they have been vaccinated against this? And, and to, to follow that up for, for people who are outside of the education game, but a part of the community. The fear has rarely been for teachers about ourselves. It is about our families and it's about the students. And I know I will be less likely to infect one of my students because I have been vaccinated. It is like, like, look at my face. I, I'm overwhelmed at the relief of that and knowing that it will be both doses in time before I'm in a classroom. I want that for every teacher. What can we do?
I guess I will say that's true. Having, having been a volunteer at a vaccination site, I was able to get a vaccination and there is just no relief like that first shot. In terms of what we could do, in terms of hitting pause, as a special educator, I'm like, no way, right? Because that interrupts the flow. I don't know that a gen ed teacher would feel the same way, but for me, I like consistency. So I'm not sure that pause is it. Asking teachers what they need, I think is what you need to do. So there, there are going to be the people who say, you know what? Can I have a sub for a half an afternoon just to figure out what my day is going to look like when we get back? Just give me some release time to figure that out. And, you know, maybe there could be a rolling sub throughout the week that, that relieves people for an hour or two to maybe even meet with a team and figure out what they're going to do. Now you guys have Wednesdays already built, you guys, we have Wednesdays already built in. So that is definitely useful, but they still have to plan, right? So teachers still have to plan for instruction for the time, all of it, right? So this is in addition to, they now have to figure out what their new day is going to look like. So as a teacher, I would appreciate the time of the release time during the actual workday in order to get that, that done. But Curtis is right, the, the, the biggest thing you could do, you know, I was on the MTA call where they, they, they polled all of the teachers on the call. And they said, would you, would you feel comfortable going back to full-time in-person if you had a vaccination? And 99% of the people there said yes. So that's all I needed to say. So teachers need to be vaccinated. And then after that, it is so much easier to teach in-person. It's online. So I imagine most teachers feel the same way.
Julian, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I, maybe it's a point of order only in that I, I appreciate hearing all the perspectives, but I want to make sure that we give Jake the space to do. He, he's, he's got to make the decisions for how to work with the teachers and, and I want to make sure that we kind of keep that line between governance and management clear. So it was really more of a point of order. The other, the other thing I actually wanted to name I, is that maybe these are two separate things. Because the commissioner, the commissioner's data very clearly says, and the CDC very clearly says, and this administration in Washington very clearly says that there hasn't been any, you know, schools that have been open through the pandemic had no difference in outbreaks without vaccines. And so I get it, like, the fear is real, but I just want to kind of name that too.
Thank you, Julia. Okay. Shall we move on to the next agenda item? All right. So next up, we have finance subcommittee update. Carrie, do we have a finance subcommittee update?
No, I think just what I said before, the finance committee is looking at the line items and is available to, you know, Joe and Jake as we go through the budget process, but we're here to support the process.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda is upcoming meetings. March 18th is a special session placeholder, right Jake?
Yeah, I, I think we, we sort of held the 18th and the 25th. And, and I think at this point, we're looking at the 25th and not the 18th.
Okay, that's good. Cause I think there are three parents of rising seventh graders that have a meeting at 18, at 6 p.m. So you'd be down three members, at least three. There could be more of us. I'm not sure. Okay. So March 25th, there's a finance subcommittee meeting at four. And then March 25th, there's, there'll be a special session at six and likely we won't be doing the March 18th.
So Christine, I just want to ask, while we're here, if Joe has a preference for meeting on the 18th or the 25th for the finance subcommittee? Is he still on the?
I think that potentially a checkpoint with the finance subcommittee, if not the 18th, then early the week of the, of the 25th, if possible for scheduling would be helpful. Because we, we will be going through a series of revisions here over the course of the next couple of weeks. And I think a checkpoint prior to that evening would be, would be advisable.
So the 22nd or the 23rd, that would be a Monday or Tuesday?
The 22nd, I, I think if possible would, would be one, but, but we can try to schedule that outside of this and make sure that the public sees it on, on our meeting calendar as soon as we have a date and a time.
Okay.
Great. Um, I believe we might have one item, other business not anticipated by the chair. Joe, did you want to touch on this or Jake?
I am happy to. We, we simply, you know, Joe, Joe was the bearer of the good news, but, but I'm, I'm happy to. We, we would just like to thank and we'll do so more formally at the next meeting. We'd like to thank the Adams Community Bank for a very generous donation to the class of 2021, help make graduation doable and more special. So more detail on that next time as you vote to accept the donation. But, but we did not want to let this evening go by without thanking the, the folks at Adams Community Bank for that support for our students.
Thank you. Thank you, Adams Community Bank. Okay. Do I have a motion to move into executive session with no intent to return to open session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Magia, all bargaining units, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining?
Almost.
Michelle moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion? Roll call alphabetically, please.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Byzantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Johnson, I.
Noah, I.
Okay, it is 9:13. We will be moving into executive session. Thank you, everyone who attended tonight.
And that is a separate link, school committee. So you have that. Okay. So thank you.